I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
And would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our agenda is to, recommended action is to enter closed session. The recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Thank you.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin with our recognitions, I'd like to read our mission statement, which is Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning experiences, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. Dr. Small, if you could bring in with recognition.
Absolutely, I'd like to ask Josh Schumacher, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, to please come forward to honor our National Merit Scholars tonight.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Small, administrators, parents, and students. For more than 60 years, the National Merit Scholarship Program has been recognizing and honoring our country's most academically talented students. It is my pleasure to introduce a group of District 211 students from the class of 2023 who have distinguished themselves as National Merit Scholars. The National Merit Scholarship Competition begins in October of the junior year. Students from around the country complete the Preliminary Schoolastic Aptitude Test, commonly called the PSAT, along with approximately 1.6 other, 1.6 million other American high school students. Based on the performance on that assessment, approximately 16,000 students from across the country received recognition from the College Board as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. The District 211 students with us this evening qualified as semifinalists and are among the top 1% of all students in the United States. Tonight, we recognize each student's accomplishment by presenting them with a District 211 Robert Creek Excellence Award. This award is named in honor of Robert Creek, who served District 211 as a board member for 20 years, 19 of those years as the Board President. Mr. Creek distinguished himself by promoting a constant vision of student and teacher excellence in District 211. I would like to ask our Board President, Ms. Anna Klimkowitz, to join me at the podium to present the award to these outstanding students. I also ask that the parents of each scholar stand and be recognized as I call your son or daughter to come forward and receive the Robert Creek Medallion. As you can imagine, these students are highly involved in our schools and communities. Some of our 36 scholars were unable to join us tonight due to other engagements and responsibilities. I am, however, pleased to introduce you to the following students. From Palatine High School, Vidi Patel. From William Fremd High School, Ifra Beg. Ragav Chandra Shaker. Andrew D. Calvin Frank. Hongtao Hu. Ji Wu Kang. Thomas Lu. Debjuda Mandal. Shirogi Mazunter. Shruti Putanker. Vibeth Prabakar. Jason C. Megan Wong. Kevin Zo. Alexander Ziwang. From Conant High School, Soham Gupta. Fiona Mendoza. Shivshankar Prasad. Sri Devi Pasad. Arav Reina. Brooke Zhang. From Schaumburg High School, Sarag Nuthi Lepati. Mira Pradeepan. Emma Radons. Nihal Shetty. Elizabeth Wang. And I want to make sure no one else came in after we started. Are we, okay, then we are good. Dr. Small.
Congratulations, students. That is a wonderful accomplishment. We are so proud of you, and I know that your parents are so proud of you also. If you could walk right back around, please, to where you were. We have two more awards, and then we'll take your picture in just a minute. Next, I'd ask that Luke Jenner come forward to the podium. James B. Conant High School art teacher Luke Jenner has been named the 2022 High School Art Educator of the Year by the Illinois Art Education Association. Luke started teaching in District 211 eight years ago, dividing his time between Hoffman Estates and Conant High Schools. He has taught exclusively at Conant for the last five years. He teaches graphic design, 3D modeling, and video animation, as well as advanced placement art history and art in contemporary society. He says a career in art education means helping his students develop important 21st century skills like problem solving, critical thinking, as well as creative expression. Congratulations, Luke. This is quite a state honor. We are so proud of you. Next, I would ask Chief Operating Officer Lauren Hummel to please come to the podium. We have a special bus driver we'd like to honor tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Marietta Shild to join me at the podium. I'm pleased to recognize bus driver Marietta Shild for her role in a life-saving situation involving a gentleman within our community. Marietta just finished her morning shift as a District 211 bus driver when she helped resuscitate a man who was suffering a medical emergency. Marietta, who has driven school buses for 23 years and has been a bus driver with District 211 for the past five years, was in a drive-through lane after her shift when the vehicle in front of her rear-ended another car. Marietta quickly noticed that the driver was slumped over in his car, at which point she jumped from her own vehicle, helped to pull the unconscious man out of his car, and administered emergency CPR on the gentleman until the paramedics arrived. Marietta says she was in the right place at the right time, but anyone who knows her knows that Marietta is always one to go out of her way, no matter what the reason. Marietta's quick response and willingness to help an individual she did not know are truly representative, representative of her outstanding character. Marietta's actions helped to save this individual's life. She said she was overjoyed to learn of the outcome. Marietta, we thank you for all that you do for District 211 and our students each and every day. Additionally, we all offer a special note of appreciation for your quick thinking that day and for being a wonderful representation of District 211 within our community. We are proud to recognize your outstanding character and quick response in this life-threatening situation that evening, or this evening. Board President Anna Klimkowitz has a certificate for you in recognition of your heroic actions that day. We applaud you for being a wonderful employee and an outstanding citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Congratulations to our students for your outstanding success. I'm glad that, you know, I take a look at our mission statement, and you've taken advantage of what our school has to offer. You're working on a support, strong support system, which includes your teachers, the staff at the school, and your parents, and they're a vital part of your being able to come here for the recognition. So congratulations to our, our students. Congratulations to Luke Jenner. The arts are wonderful. I, I can't say enough about him. So congratulations to, to you on that wonderful accomplishment of the Illinois Art Education Association Educator of the Year. And a very heartfelt thank you to Marietta. What she did that day was, was amazing. I've had the privilege of, of knowing Marietta for a number of years, from, from PTA and things of that nature. A delightful woman with a wonderful sense of humor and a willingness to, to give and go above and beyond to help other people. Just outstanding. And, and her, her kids are outstanding also, participating in various activities. So again, thank you to everyone that's, that's here this evening. We are going to take some pictures, so we'll have our students, and we will then take about a five-minute break so pictures can be taken. The next item on our agenda is public comments, and the Board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium, so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. We have 19 people speaking before us, and I will call the first name, and then I'll ask, I'll give a second name, so you'll be ready to, to speak. The first is Jane Van, followed by Natasha Maldonado. Jane?
Yes, my name is Jane Van. My words tonight will be very brief and succinct. This is a gentle reminder to the school board. The public school systems in the United States exist to educate all children without the interference of a specific religious belief or political stance. School board decisions need to be made considering all the students in the student population and make their decisions based on facts, not emotions.
Thank you. Natasha Maldonado, followed by Joseph Quain. I apologize if I mispronounced the name in advance.
Good evening, my name is Natasha. I'm a graduate of Fremd High School, a single parent, and a homeowner in this community. Like many parents, I would have been home cooking dinner tonight, working on homework and trying to get ready for the next school day. Fortunately, my youngest graduated this year. I'm here for those parents, the single parents, the parent that works full-time and wants to be with their children tonight, the average parents like me that would not have known what's going to be implemented in our high schools. Soon you will be able to vote on the new sex education standards. These new standards go above and beyond what an average parent like me would want our children to learn. The new curriculum for freshmen and sophomores, and we're talking 13- to 16-year-olds, they will be taught about explicit sex acts, like oral and anal sex, even though they're not even the consenting age for sex. These students will also be taught how to masturbate, because you know, every high school kid wants to learn how to masturbate from their middle-aged high school teacher. Yeah, you can hear my sarcasm there. These students, finally, these standards will teach that there are many genders. This is a theory, this is not a fact. This is not scientifically proven. There are still XX and XY chromosomes, last I checked. And until they find a new chromosome, or this theory can be proven, I think we should follow the science. So let's focus on getting our children to higher education, where they can debate these theories at a collegiate level with their professors. In closing, I would recommend opting out of this curriculum, like many other districts already have. I'll leave my email, because I would appreciate if you can inform me how children would benefit, would benefit from being taught this curriculum. If this is to teach tolerance and acceptance, we can do that without sexualizing our children. Also, I would like to know if there is any state or federal financial assistance that comes to the district, or the district will receive if they accept this curriculum. I hope that you are not selling our students out for a buck.
Joseph, Joseph Quain, followed, followed by Steve Crane.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Chan. I'm a resident of Palatine for 20, almost 20 years. I'm a parent of District 211. And today, why I'm here to, to speak is that I'm very, very much concerned about the decision that I'm going to make very quickly, which is SB 818. I know this bill asked the public school to adopt the comprehensive sex education. So I just don't want my kid to be educated by this curriculum. Why? You know, I used to be a teacher, you know, I just have a question for you guys. What if you have your son or daughter, or grandson or granddaughter in my class, and one day I send an email and said, hey, dear parents, or grandparents, or legal, legal guardians, I'm gonna, starting from next week, I'm gonna teach you, your kids in a class for how to making, how to make sex, how to do a anal sex, anal sex, oral sex, something like that, and show them some pornographic pictures, how to, you know, do that things. What do you think about it? Maybe you're called number one, right? Yeah, so this is exactly what will happen if you guys will teach the comprehensive sex education curriculum in class. So if you don't want to, the parents to call police, please vote no. Don't adopt that SB 8181, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Crane. Steve Crane, followed by Mark Basalianz. Mr. Crane.
Good evening, I'm Steve Crane. I am also a proud graduate of Fremd High School and excited for my own children to start at Fremd High School. My oldest is currently in seventh grade. I am here because I received a flyer heading into a community meeting last week expressing concerns that previous speakers have noted. And while I first laughed it off as alarmist, I was concerned that we might have a coordinated and vocal minority in this community opposed to comprehensive sexual education, which is a key need for our teenage students. I believe that it is important for our students to have a full education, to understand the risks and consequences of behaviors they might engage in, so that they can make informed decisions. Our students deserve that accurate information. These topics are part of teen life, whether we like it or not, and it is important that they have access to appropriate, valid, factual information, comprehensive in nature. I am here to ask the Board to adopt what is outlined in the Senate Bill. I read the bill. I read the bill, and it does not contain the alarmist language that is being read from scripts from other speakers, from the flyer that I received last week. I encourage the Board to adopt this for the betterment of our community and for the health of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, please, please refrain. Each person has an opportunity to speak, please. Mark, and then followed by Renee Tru.
The hysterical and misleading door hangers left by the New Hope Community Church around our community insinuate that Public Act 102-0522, or SB 0818, will force high school students into masturbation and oral and anal sex. We've heard that tonight. In addition, the flyers promote intolerance and outrage at the prospect of teaching children about other people who are not like them. I urge the District 11 Board to stand strong against this bullying and adopt SB 0818 to educate children for their own safety and well-being. To promote the idea that high school freshmen and sophomores do not already know about the terms and activities listed on the door hangers, at best willfully ignorant, and at worst, a calculated PR stunt. Educating students with the most current medically accurate and culturally up-to-date information arms them against making uninformed, life-changing choices, being manipulated, and being victims. While some may think it's difficult to imagine anyone thinking that this is acceptable for minors, the realities are harsh. Nearly 70% of all reported sexual assaults, including assaults on adults, occur to children ages 17 and under. Evidence that chill, that a child is in an unhealthy relationship or has been sexually abused is not always obvious. Young victims may not recognize their victimization as sexual abuse, as the perpetrator is often a family member, family friend, or respected community leader, and they have not been taught to recognize manipulative relationships and inappropriate behaviors. Sexual abuse victims of all ages choose not to report their abuse, because when they do, they are victimized, shamed, gaslit, or dismissed by the same people and systems that are supposed to support them. The threats are real and closer than we are all comfortable in acknowledging. The most recent example is the revelation just this year, nearly 400 leaders and members of the Southern Baptist Convention affiliated churches have been credibly accused and/or convicted of sexual assault, grooming, sexual misconduct against employees and members of all ages. Those accusations were hidden, dismissed, ignored, and denied
You have one minute remaining.
by church leaders for 20 years to avoid bad publicity and maintain power. This is how sexual abusers work. The New Hope Community Church is an affiliate of the Southern Baptist Convention. The best defense against child physical and sexual assault, bullying, homophobia, gender bashing, body dysmorphia, teen pregnancy, abortion, and myriad other issues covered in the proposed SB 0818 is not enforced ignorance, but education, honest and open discussion, understanding, and an access to comprehensive resources. I again implore the Board, decide with education, adopt SB 0818, and arm students of all ages with the information and tools to keep themselves safe from the real threat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Renee, Renee Tru, followed by Joanna Mulca.
Distinguished Board members, hello, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Renee. I am a longtime Palatine resident, the parent of children in CCSD 15 and D-211, and an active member of the PTA. I recognize that you have not had the easiest term, what with pandemics, investigations into racial profiling, staffing issues, bad press from discrimination-minded faculty, and all of the work behind the upcoming referendum vote. You have handled these and more with discretion and professionalism, and an eye towards what is best for the children serviced in these local schools. I ask that you take the difficult road one more time and show your unequivocal support for SB 818. There are many scientific, clinical, peer-reviewed, published studies that show the many physical, mental, social, societal, and financial benefits of comprehensive and age-appropriate sexual health education. Several are listed in the bill itself. I think I printed them out if you want to see them later, but I'm not going to go through those. As a parent of a current high schooler, I know that these teens are already discussing, discussing gender and sexual preferences. They're experimenting with pronouns and fashion and romance, and if the New Hope Baptist Church and others wish to prevent that, they are too late. What are the teens not talking about? Consent, manipulation, autonomy, abuse. This curriculum, this SB 818 curriculum, which covers this material in an age-appropriate and trauma-sensitive way, is at its core an anti-grooming curriculum. I imagine it is much harder for a child to be sexually abused if that child has been taught consent, bodily autonomy, boundary setting, how to identify abuse towards them or in others, what to do if there is abuse, and how substances like alcohol can affect one's ability to consent. This knowledge gives a teenager a sense of confidence, of strength, of comfort. Please support this SB
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Please support this SB 818 curriculum. Help break the abuse cycle, stay in step with the rest of the state and the nation, and set our kids up for success and a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna, Joanna Mulca, followed by Sankar Balu.
Hello, my name is Joanna Mulca. I'm a mom of two. I'm sure it's going to be less than three minutes, because I am not a public speaker. I just would love to, I just came here because I have two little kids that I would love to go to college one day. I'm sorry if I get emotional. It might take three minutes. I don't see any good this bill bringing here. I really believe that this money can be spent well towards mathematics, towards biology, towards history. I really love to see my kids being taught about respect despite the gender, despite the skin color, religious. I'm here with my really good friend, and we're totally different beliefs, we're different skin colors, and I respect her. I would love you, and I truly believe that deep down in your heart, you as well believe, that we can teach our kids to be a good human beings. And you now go to the store, and I experienced that myself, and kids cannot count change without using calculators. They don't know basic mathematics skills. We should really prepare them for life. I don't see masturbation or anal sex. Please, that is a parent's job. I have, I truly take responsibility for my kids, and I'm going to talk to them about those things, because this is my responsibility. Those are my kids. I want them to be safe and feel safe, not, I'm sorry, teachers are strangers as well for me and for my kids, but telling them such intimate things, this is private, this is delicate, and this is private, private parts, private for a reason. So, please, do not, please do not vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Shankar Balu, followed by Lisa Castellano.
Hey, distinguished board members, this is Shankar Balu. I am Hindu-American. I became a U.S. citizen a couple of years back, so I'm new to all these things. I didn't know about this particular SB 818. I was like clueless, what is this? And my, I have two children, one in the junior in Hoffman, and one is just six-plus, and he's going to, you know, Hoover. He's in the first grade. So, when I came to know about this pamphlet, I'm not associated with the church to begin with, but it kind of provided me the pamphlet lying around when I was actually going out to campaign for Raja Krishnamurti that weekend, last weekend. And I found this pamphlet, and I saw this, what is this, you know, a lot of things talking about, and I didn't even know it is from a church. And then I did the QR code scanning, and I went through that, and I did some research. I went through all the proceedings happening, happened last year in the state senate. I didn't even know that there exists, you know, local state senators, as well as, you know, representatives, because I'm, like I said, I'm very new, U.S. citizen. So, I came to know all those things. My point is, I think like the previous speaker said, you know, Hinduism, the main god, Shiva, he had dedicated half of his body to Parvati, who is the female, his wife, and that's the kind of, you know, importance we give to women. And with respect to LGBTQ, you know, we have gods which are, you know, like LGBTQ comes under that. And even Hinduism embraces people who doesn't even follow a god. Even eth is can be called themselves as Hindus.
You have one minute remaining.
Hinduism talks more about the rituals and followings and practices. I have only one minute. So, there are a lot of things I want to talk about it, but I feel that, you know, you saw that, almost seventy percentage of the kids are Asian-American, and we are hardly having ten percent, twenty percent. And we need to teach the kids about computer science, and our country's GDP is almost seven hundred and seventy-nine percentage of the debt of the current GDP. So, we have to talk, teach the kids about, more about how they can improve, and we need to increase this number of people who are getting this, getting international in the top one percent, instead of teaching the kids with sex education, which is, should be left to the parents. And it's not that, you know, I'm not saying left side or right side, but what my point is, like, you know, as a parent, and I spoke to-
Your speaking time has ended.
-twenty parents, and none of them even aware of this particular thing. They are, most of them are going to opt out, I'm sorry, I'm taking-
Your speaking time has ended. Your speaking time has ended.
Please, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, make it as an opt-in, so that inform the parents, and that'll be better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Lisa Castellano, followed by Teri Paulson.
Good evening. I was here speaking about this back in July, but this is going to serve as just another refresher and reminder. I'm a parent of two Fremont students. They're average students, they're social, participate in extracurricular activities, have part-time jobs, and they stay out of trouble. Illinois passed into law Senate Bill 818, the requirement for the use of the National Sex Education Standards, which is a misleading title written by an activist, nongovernmental organization that is not accountable to any legislative oversight. This non-for-profit organization is called Advocates for Youth, and they claim that it's time for young people to lead, and they say that they are young, powerful, and taking over. I was unable to find financials on the website, and there was no information about how to obtain them. However, they employ numerous staff members with advanced degrees, PhDs, and MDs on their team. The emphasis of Advocates for Youth is almost entirely on people of color, gender nonconforming, homosexual, bisexual, pansexual, transgender, genderqueer, and the list goes on. There is no mention of positive masculinity, positive male roles and behaviors, and even men, except when referring to an advocacy program for young men who want to have sex with other men. In fact, eighty-seven percent of the staff is female, and almost all of the subjects on the website photos were women. Yet they spell the word woman as W-O-M-X-N. They can't even stomach the word man being part of the word woman. Is this what reflects the values in this community, which is made up of mostly families with half of the population being men and boys? Advocates for Youth promotes rhetoric like being pro-defund the police and racist terms like the word whiteness. Also, they promote a pro-abortion campaign called "Abortion Out Loud." For a choice that is so personal, that cause makes no sense. On the website, I found one religious base reference, and it described queer Muslims. Reading through the National Sex Education-
You have one minute remaining.
...standards, quite a bit of it was disturbing. I would like to pose a challenge to an upcoming speaker at this podium who is pro-NSES. Please explain to me the importance and benefits of a child learning about anal sex, oral sex, and masturbation, and sexual pleasure in a school setting. I do not want to hear the word "the usual inclusive reasoning." I would like deeper information with examples. Advocates for Youth organization has been around for decades. There is no doubt that it has evolved since gender ideology did not exist until just recently. The organization would be expected to continue to radically update its content without any oversight in years to come, and this is terrifying. I'm asking you to please vote not to adopt this outrageous, despicable curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri, Teri Paulson, Teri Paulson, followed by James Pittman.
Good evening. My name is Teri Paulson, and I'm here to ask you to opt out of the NSES sex ed standards. I want to start by making it clear that it's not too late. The law states that schools MAY choose to adopt these standards. It doesn't say shall, it doesn't say must, it says may. So far, five hundred and forty-eight school districts have opted out. Only twenty-four have actually adopted them. Two hundred and ninety, eighty-nine have taken no action, and our district is among them. The fact of the matter is that you could have opted out at any time in the last year by telling the superintendent that we will not be adopting these standards, make other arrangements, but you didn't. This leads us to conclude that you are actually planning to vote for this. Have we gone so far down the road that it isn't obvious to you how outrageous this is? Your first clue should have been that the standards were created by LGBTQ activists, as a previous speaker just pointed out. Most of the standards are actually fine, but like a little bit of poison, any amount of some of them is too much. Consider standard number SH8CC1. By the way, they want to teach this starting in sixth grade. Quote, "Define vaginal, oral, and anal sex," end quote. Now, public schools teaching kids about anal sex is bad, but it goes from bad to incredibly bad when you look up their definition of anal sex. It's found in the glossary of NSES. On page fifty-nine, "Anal sex," quote, "sexual behavior involving penetration of the anus by a penis or a sex toy."
You have one minute remaining.
Ms. Klimkowitz, Mr. Bradley, do you really want to be known as the people who voted to teach kids about putting sex toys in their rear ends? Mr. Rosenblum, Ms. Cavill, I believe you're both running for reelection in the spring, are you not? This would make a very interesting door hanger. This is an insane situation when we have to beg our school board not to teach our kids perversity. Please do your job, please do what's right, protect our kids, and opt out of this. Thank you.
James, all right, James Pittman, followed by Calvin Lindstrom.
Good evening. My name is James Pittman, and I am the pastor of New Hope Community Church. We did hang these door hangers, because we believe that an informed electorate is a good thing. And so, when we actually saw SB 818, and I don't know where people say that it doesn't use the language, maybe they haven't looked it up. We have. If you want to, you can go to our website. It does use those words that Teri just said. It says that in, from sixth to eighth grade, define vaginal, oral, and anal sex. That's an eleven-year-old child. It's an eleven-year-old child. If I was to take an eleven-year-old child or a class of eleven-year-olds at my church and began to teach what is an SB 818, they would call the police on me. And they should, because that's wrong. I don't understand how just because you dress it up and put it in a classroom, that all of a sudden that makes it okay. It's not. And maybe we have a difference of opinion with other people in the community. I guess we do. But I do not believe, even my own children, the eleven-year-olds, I'm going to have these conversations with them. Now, if a parent wants to have that conversation with their child, even though I disagree, that's their right. That's their parents. Even if I disagree, that's their children. But at no point should another adult be teaching other kids, parents' children, about anal sex when they're eleven-years-old. I don't care where you are. I don't care what the context is. Maybe we have a difference of opinion, but this is where we stand. Teaching these things, sex toys, and sexual identities at eleven-years-old, I don't care where it is, it's wrong. That's our opinion. We started off with-
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you. We started off with these door hangers, and they've been met with a lot of oohs and ahs. They didn't know. Now they do. We ordered thousands, we ran out in two days, we had to order another thousand, thousands and thousands, and I just want to let you know, from now on, we at New Hope Community Church as a community service will let people know what's going on in our communities. We'll keep ordering these door hangers, we'll keep passing it out, we'll keep informing people what's going on. I just want to let people know, we've only just begun. Thank you.
Thank you. Calvin, Calvin Lindstrom. Ladies and gentlemen, please, Calvin Lindstrom, followed by Jerry Frida.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Calvin Lindstrom. I pastor a church in Arlington Heights, Illinois, so although I'm not a resident of this district, I do have church members that are residents, taxpayers, and so I am speaking on behalf of those that I represent as a pastor. I do want to address some of the comments that were made attacking New Hope Community Church by one of the previous speakers. It was the fallacy of guilt by association. Yes, sadly, there are wicked things that are done in churches, and the perpetrators, whether they be pastors, youth ministers, whoever, they should be punished. And in my view, sexual predators should be very severely punished. So, in no way are we looking to sweep these things under the rug. It sometimes does happen. But it should also be noted that there have been horrible scandals in public school systems. And in some cases, the scandals in churches probably have gotten greater attention. That's not my point, but I do want to defend New Hope Community Church and guilt by association. I also would like to point out that New Hope Community Church has left the Southern Baptist Convention for various reasons, so that attempt to smear them is amiss. The National Sex Education Standards, there's something that sounds like, ooh, national sex education standards, but really, it's a marketing ploy. Who determines national? What other states have adopted these, quote, "national" standards? There's something that if they are adopted, we should ask the question, where does this go? I don't know if you're familiar with Mr. Kinsey, Professor Kinsey, famous sexologist at Indiana University, a supposed scientist-
You have one minute remaining.
Do you know that he experimented on children? Alfred Kinsey, the famous scientist praised at Indiana University, experimented on children? This is, quote, "science"? So, if we attach our standards to, quote, "science," that can be very, very dangerous. I would appeal to this board, reject these National Sex Education Standards for the well-being of the children you serve. I was amazed to see how many wonderful students this district had, the National Merit Scholars. Focus on those things. Stay away from this perversion. Jesus said, whoever causes one of these little ones to believe in me to sin, it would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and he were drowned in the depths of the sea. I thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Frida, followed, Jerry Frida, followed by Joyce Slavik.
Hi, my name is, excuse me, Jerry Frida. I live in the district. And at last month's board meeting, and as we've seen here tonight, there were several speakers who implored you to reject the comprehensive sex ed program. Well, it's certainly their right to speak. It's concerning that their objections were based on their religious beliefs, and their desire to impose those beliefs on the taxpayers of this district-
Please be respectful.
...and their desire to impose those beliefs on all of the taxpayers of this district. As noted years ago by a distinguished Illinois author and Pulitzer Prize winner Archibald McClish, quote, "Religion is at its best when it makes us ask hard questions about ourselves, and it's at its worst when it deludes us into thinking that we have all the answers for everybody else," unquote. And since there is an opt-out provision for this part of the district curriculum, it's difficult to see why their objections should be considered by this board. Our public schools are taxpayer-funded public schools, not some branch of a religion. When any religion attempts to hijack the agenda of an American public school, it's cause for alarm. And as I pointed out before, there's a growing confluence around here between religious groups, political groups, and so-called parents groups, whose aims seem to be to create chaos in our public schools. Just this week, Awake Illinois, the same group that helped push the class-action mask lawsuit onto this district and the expense involved, and whose leader, the local Republican Party featured as their guest speaker last month, said on their official Twitter account this week, quote, "Our culture war is religious at its root. The dividing line between these two irreconcilable religious views runs through our neighborhoods, cities, states, and country, and the self-deifying pagan Marxist views now control our nation's institutions," unquote. Really? Well, at least I said the quiet part out loud. For the forty years that I've been in this district, I've been proud to know that the students here were getting an honest and quality education, that year after- here were getting an honest and quality education, that year after year, ranks among some of the top schools in the state. It's not perfect, but please, don't let using rational development for our continuing progress in a changing world be sacrificed to the scoldings by some religious activists in concert with far-right political extremists hoping to rile up their base. If that happens, and the predictable result in chaos occurs, we all lose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Joyce Slavik. Ladies, gentlemen, uh, next is Joyce Slavik followed by Kim Pinkerman.
Hi, uh, my name is Joyce Slavik. I live in the district. Right-wing hate is on the offensive. We've seen it with the Donald Trump presidency, we saw it during the January 6th insurrection, and we've seen it played out in our own district.
Please.
Right-wing extremists keep trying to stoke division and hate in our community by pushing for book bans, promoting anti-LGBTQ hate, and attacking diversity initiatives. Americans overwhelmingly do not support book bans. In a CBS poll from February, over 80% of those polled do not support any book bans related to ideas critical of US history or discussions of race. According to NPR, since January 2021, there have been 35 states and 137 bills seeking to restrict education on American history, race, gender, and sexuality. From the CDC National Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance Survey results for 2019, it's clear from the national data that many LGBTQ youth people, uh, young people continue to suffer higher health and suicide risks than their peers. LGBTQ students are more likely to experience victimization, violence, and suicide thought- suicidal thoughts in straight, cisgender youth. In many areas of the data, transgender students are facing more disparities in 2019 than they were in 2017. Adults modeling this bullying and hateful behavior in these very meetings is painful and sad to witness. Good news is that in recent polling reported on Politico indicates that voters are far more worried about schools' day-to-day concerns than the right-wing extremist creepy obsession over gender identity and supposed liberal classroom, quote, "indoctrination." Katrina Mendiola from the NEA states, "What people care about are the same things that educators care about. They want fully funded schools, they want educators to have livable and competitive pay, and they want mental health support for kids. Extremists are focused on crushing public education and replacing it with private schools that lack transparency and don't support diversity, equity, and inclusion. Often, they're promoting their religious values while diverting public funds from our public schools. I believe that like most of America, our district, our district does not believe in book bans-
You have one minute remaining.
And doing with, and, uh, doing away with health and sex education. We don't want to see guns for other schools. Instead, we do want to see our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives thrive. We want mental health support. We want kids to learn honest, accurate history with all its blemishes as well as its points of pride. And we want support for all our students. We don't want to see hate win. Thank you."
Thank you. Next is Kim Pinkerman followed by Kristin Steele.
All right, hello everyone. My name is Kim Pinkerman. I have three kids at Framed High School. Um, October, on October 11th, I emailed Josh Schumacher and I am requesting a copy of the wellness curriculum and its instructional materials. I received a response back from him citing Illinois statute ILCS 5 backsplash 280 hyphen 19 dash 1, which states, "Any member of the public may inspect all text and instructional material used to the public schools," or "used in the public schools." If someone did not look up what this statute was, this would be incredibly, I think, very intimidating. He then stated that he would have Mr. Langer follow up with me, which Mr. Langer did. He was absolutely delightful in this whole process. Um, he responded back to me very quickly and a date was set up for me to come into the school and review the PDF file, files off of a laptop at Framed. Um, I was allowed to view the files with another parent with the same curiosities of my own. We were allowed to view the files by ourselves and with no time restraint. The viewing took us about an hour. I had requested to have these by last Friday. Our viewing was this morning at nine o'clock this morning. Um, the timing, I, I don't like that part. Anyhow, at the end of the session, Mr. Langer met us in the hallway, walked us up to the front door. He was very nice, totally courteous, and very, very respectful. Um, we had a great meeting with him. I did not ask him, um, I did ask him why when I requested these files to be emailed to me in a very quick fashion so that I could look over them before the meeting tonight, which I was planning on coming to, why did we all have to go through this process of coming to the school to see them? He told me that he was, or instructed to do so. And that was all he said. I'm very curious why in the day and age of technology, email, and e-learning, why would a parent have to come to the school to view a curriculum that is being taught to their child? Personally, I view this as a complete waste of Mr. Langer's and my own time-
You have one minute remaining.
I do have the flexibility in my work schedule, but some parents do not. How would parents that don't be able to see the curriculum, are you going to expect Mr. Langer to be here on, on late nights or on the weekends? Um, I see this nothing is more as a roadblock by the administration for parents to not see what is being taught to their kids. Um, the statute does not say that you have to come and view the material in the building, and it does not say it cannot be emailed. I believe that this process is intimidating, outdated, and very overly burdensome for both sides, not to mention the fact that it make a school seem as if you guys are hiding something that you don't want the parents to see. I would like to request the board modify existing policies or create a new policy to require the administration to provide electronic copies of board-approved instructional materials and curriculum excluding assessments, the scope and sequences of the courses, the course outcomes, the objectives to the parents or community members upon request. I would also like to request-
Your speaking time has ended.
I have one sentence.
Please.
I would also like to request that this be added as an item for discussion on the November board meeting. Every parent in District 211 should be able to see curriculum slash materials as quickly and as easily as possible. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next is Kristin, Kristin Steele followed by, followed by Jen Welsh.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Steele, a resident of D-211. As part of the March 2020 CARES Act, D-211 received and spent $1,135,441.59. In December 2020, D-211 received SRR2 funds with a budget of $4,130,009, and the amount spent through 2022 was $1,511,000. For SRR3, D-211 has been allocated $9,270,929 to be used towards returning all students to in-person instruction and mitigating the short-term and long-term effects of learning loss. The use of this funding, which is available through 2023-2024 school year, will be determined based on the needs of our school community and the analysis of the success of the programs that utilize the CARES and CRRS A funding. Each school district that receives ARP funds must also designate not less than 20% of the total allocation to address the academic impact of lost instructional time through the implementation of evidence-based interventions, and address the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on students from low-income families, students of color, children with disabilities, English learners, migratory students, students experiencing homelessness, and children and youth in foster care. For D-211, this represents $1,854,185 of the grant. My question is this: What meaningful, engaging, and metric-based activities have been put in place to address this learning loss and gaps of students in D-211? Finally, and this is directly from D-211 website, each district must submit a plan for IS, to the ISBE for the use of these ARP funds. This plan must be developed after engaging in meaningful consultation with stakeholders, including parents, students, families, school district administrators, teachers, principals, school leaders, educators, school staff, and their unions. 211 has accomplished this meaningful consultation-
You have one minute remaining.
-through several methods over the past year. This is all directly from the website. What I want to understand is, I have asked for a plan submitted for SRR3 and was told there was none. There is also a survey at the bottom of SRR3 for parents to, um, submit, and I, I stumbled on it by happenstance. Where's the survey? I have asked to whom it was, um, sent to and any information around that, and I have not yet gotten that information. In District 54, the administration submitted their plan. It's very clear what they're looking for and what they're going to use their money for. I reached out to Andy DeRoz, the superintendent, and I had this information in less than two hours. To tie this together for the community, D-211 is right now sitting on a 54% fund balance, and in this inflationary and tough income time, looking to take the maximum tax levy. Sitting on this exorbitant-
Time has ended.
I have two sentences. Sitting on this exorbitant amount of money without it being allocated and dropping a survey embedded on the webpage that no one knows about hardly seems transparent or engaging. Either there is total lack of thought and leadership on what to do with the money, or it's intentional to sit on the money until after you've taken the maximum tax levy from the taxpayers. Thank you.
All right, Jen Welsh, and followed by Stacy Gale. Is there Jen, it looks like Jen Welsh? All right, if that individual's not here, then, um, Stacy Gale.
My name is Stacy Gale, and I'm a resident of D-211. Superintendent Small, I would like to thank you for including our email exchange regarding the district-level parent-teacher discipline advisory committee. Now the board can see, I really do make an effort to raise my concerns directly to the administration prior to bringing them to publicly to the board. I hope you can also see I had to send three emails and give public comment, and the board had to take action before Lisa would address my concern about the district not adhering to the law. Perhaps her lack of willingness or ability to answer the very straightforward question contributes to the 70 emails she cited in a previous communication to me and the board. Interestingly, tonight, she continues to inadequately answer the question, "Does D-211 have an existing or have they ever had a parent-teacher discipline advisory board?" Who annually reviews the disciplinary policies and implementation with the board as required per Public Act 99-456? She's tried to confuse the issue of safety and discipline in an effort to hide the fact the committee doesn't exist and has never existed, but she plans to have one in the latter part of the year. She's obviously decided a single meeting is all that is required, and parents who attended the principal's safety meeting in August would be considered for school representation. As you are aware, after Lisa failed to answer my question, I submitted a FOIA request seeking all information on parent-teacher discipline advisory committee. The district returned over 500 pages of proof no such committee exists and no such annual review takes place. Please pay close attention to her words in her presentation. She talks about staff safety meetings, parent safety meetings, and student wellness committee having discussions regarding school safety. In her attempts to prove the district is meeting the legal requirements of Public Act 99-456, she does not reference discipline. I specifically asked about discipline, not safety. Oh, she tried to claim our principals have reviewed school discipline issues and concerns via their-
You have one minute remaining.
...parent meeting and staff meetings? Really? When? I didn't find a single piece of information in over 500 pages of the FOIA response which demonstrates any discussions with parents and teachers about discipline policies and implementation. Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski, for asking to add this to the agenda tonight, and thank you to all the other board members who wanted to have a discussion. Of course, Ms. Cavill, your vote of no was no surprise. Apparently, you don't care if the district meet, is meeting its legal requirements. I hope after all this time, the board has come to realize, I do not bring forth issues and make claims against the district without having sound evidence. My concern is warranted. As I've said many times, I do not raise issues that only pertain to my children. I bring forth district-wide issues. Unfortunately, I'm out of time, but I will be back next month with additional concerns regarding the leadership and truthfulness of the administration, of course backed up by solid evidence to support my claims. I look forward to listening to your discussion, and I'm always open to a one-on-one conversation. You all have my email and my phone number.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Dahl.
My name is Jennifer Dahl, and I have two children in District 211. Uh, I would like to know why the district wellness committee allows student, staff, and board representation, but refuses to allow parent participation. I am requesting this answer in writing. I will give you my information. After hearing both Josh and Lisa reference the utilization of the district wellness committee at recent board meetings, I contacted Josh to inform him that I would like to volunteer to be a parent representative. He responded, quote, "The district wellness committee is a student committee. There is no parent representation in the current structure." End quote. On October 13th, I emailed him asking for clarification on what he meant by "student committee," and asked for examples of other district-level student committees. I sent a follow-up email for the information again this week, as I had not heard back from him. I'm still waiting on your response. During the July meeting, Mr. Dombrowski asked if the district would encourage students to talk to their parents about safety concerns. There was some additional discussion, and then Lisa Small made the statement, "No," this is a quote, "We don't isolate students from their parents and families." End quote. But isn't that exactly what the wellness committee does? It separates students from their parents, then presents materials such as comprehensive sex ed with self-proclaimed sex therapist Kim Cavill and activist board member Tim McGowan as participants. Do I have to remind you both that the majority of these students are minors? What does that make you if you are speaking about sex to minors without parental knowledge and consent? Is there a form that parents have to fill out for their child to be on this committee so they know that their child attends these meetings? We, as parents, fill out forms all the time for student participation. Is this different, and why? Surely, the parents know their child is a part of this committee, and they are aware of the materials being presented, or don't they? Please take notes on the following.
You have one minute remaining.
I am requesting the board cancel all future district wellness committee meetings until further notice. I request the board require parent particip-, excuse me, parent representation, and each school adds at least two parents to their committee. I request the parents of student participants be provided the agendas and presentations for the meetings at least 72 hours prior to the meetings, so parents have ample time to review the materials and determine if their student's attendance is in the best interest of their child. I request this to be added to the new business on the November agenda. I can't believe this is happening in our district, and furthermore, I can't believe this board is allowing it to happen. I also request Kim Cavill and Tim McGowan be removed from this committee. They are prioritizing their personal agendas over the well-being of students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight's presentation will review the recommended levy amount and timeline of the action needed for the levy. The levy amount, which needs to be determined by the November 10th board meeting, will represent the majority of the fiscal year 23's financial revenue and will also directly impact each year of the long-range financial forecasts. Therefore, in tonight's presentation, the, the projected impact on future years is presented based on the levy amount. As our reserve amounts get closer to the 33% minimum, it is important to see how immediate decisions potentially affect the future stability of the district to continue to offer quality programs as expected and capital projects as planned without debt. Tonight's levy amount recommendation is 3.5% plus new growth of 0.3%. This recommendation allows for the continued high-quality educational programming, long-term financial stability for future students, employees, and community members, without the need to add additional tax burden through a debt levy. This plan includes funding for planned capital and life safety projects without incurring additional debt-
additional debt and other financial assumptions that are detailed in the presentation and in the informational report under unfinished business on the meeting agenda. Lauren Hummel, Chief Operating Officer, and Barb Peterson, Controller, will present the details behind this recommendation.
Thank you, and good evening. We're pleased to present additional information to the board this evening on the 2022 tax levy. The information that's shared this evening is supplemented with a report that's on tonight's agenda, as well as additional information that was shared with the board last month. Real estate taxes are by far the district's greatest revenue source, making up more than 83% of the district's total revenue in the current budget year. For this reason, the tax levy is a critical process to ensure that the district maintains adequate revenue to sustain operations both now and into the future. A one-year look at the levy amount is short-sighted, as the levy amount this year is used in determining levy amounts for future years. An important part of the levy process is looking at financial projections to ensure that the current levy amount maintains financial stability both now and into future years. While the budget and levy sequence overlap, the 2022 levy rate will drive next year's budget. As illustrated on this slide, the 2021 CPI rate sets the limit for the '22 levy, which will impact the '23-'24 budget. The sequence of years, '21, '22, '23, '24, is a helpful pattern to reference when considering the various components that drive both the levy and the budget sequence. The levy process in Cook County and many other counties across the state is subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, often referred to as PTEL or the Tax Cap. The Tax Cap rule was implemented to establish a cap on the amount that taxing bodies may levy each year. This cap is equal to the lesser amount of either the Consumer Price Index from the prior year or 5%. The Tax Cap also allows for new construction growth to be levied for in the year in which it's added on to the tax rolls. Last year's levy amount will be the baseline for calculating the Tax Cap limit for the current tax year. As I just shared, the rate of last year's CPI was 7%. Because this exceeds the Tax Cap rate of 5%, all taxing bodies in Cook County are subject to a levy limitation of 5% plus new property growth for the '22 tax year. The Tax Cap limit is 2% less than the rate of inflation for the prior 12-month period, the cost increase that was observed for many goods and services. In addition to the 5% cap, new property growth is estimated at 0.3% increase for a total levy limit of 5.3%.
In terms of dollars and cents, the maximum levy allowable this year under PTEL is $254.8 million. Note, this is a 5.3% increase from last year's levy after the abatement of $3 million approved by the board in March. We are very pleased to once again recommend a levy that is less than the PTEL limit. After careful consideration, we recommend a levy increase of 3.8% over the prior year. This consists of an increase of 3.5% plus 3 tenths for new property growth. This is $3.6 million less than the full levy under PTEL. On a fund-by-fund basis, you will first notice that we are allocating a lot more of our total levy to the educational fund. This is needed to cover the contractual increases in salaries and benefits, as well as the rising cost of curricular materials. You will also notice that we are not allocating any portion of the levy to IMRF or to the working cash fund. With regards to IMRF, several years ago, the board authorized additional payments to pay down our outstanding pension liability. This has resulted in lowering our IMRF annual costs to a point where next year, we can pay for our member contribution out of our fund balance. This is just projected to be a one-year change in our allocation as our member rates fluctuate year to year, but for next year, we'll have the fund balance to cover this expense. With regards to working cash, normally, these funds are levied and transferred over to operations and maintenance to cover life safety projects. Right now, we have enough in reserves and O&amp;M to cover our capital requirements for next year, so we're not recommending any levy into working cash. The recommended abatement of $3.6 million will ultimately reduce the operations and maintenance fund levy. We propose that the 2022 levy and this abatement both be approved at the December board meeting. If this levy recommendation is approved, the board will have provided over $12.5 million of tax relief to our taxpayers over a two-year period. Last year, the board passed a $3 million abatement of the operating levy. This was a permanent reduction to our levy basis, lowering taxes by $3 million last year and carrying through to another $3 million reduction this year. Also last year, the board fully abated the tax recapture levy in the amount of $2.9 million. This year, we're recommending a $3.6 million abatement of the operating levy. We do not yet know the amount of the tax refund recapture levy. This will be released by Cook County mid-November, but regardless of the amount, we are recommending a 100% abatement of that levy. On average, these abatements reduce the average homeowner's tax bill by about $160 over the two-year period from what could have been fully levied. We are all charged with being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We must levy enough to sustain our quality educational programs and provide exceptional experiences to our students. As you consider this year's levy recommendation, we ask that you keep the following things in mind. Inflation was up 7% last year and is trending another 5% this year. We're experiencing these increases in various degrees across all expense categories. However, we're only requesting a 3.8% increase in our levy. The tight labor market continues to put pressure on our salaries and benefit numbers, and we don't see relief on the horizon. We plan to continue to fund all of our capital and life safety projects with reserves. By not issuing debt to fund these needs, we have no debt service component to our levy, and thus, we do not burden our taxpayers with this additional expense. We need to levy enough to maintain adequate reserves, and we feel that this proposed levy will accomplish that. This fall, we have experienced just how critical these reserves have become, as we are able to pay all of our operating expenses from reserves as we patiently wait the collection of the second installment of the 2021 levy. We need to set a levy that provides long-term financial stability for all of us, the students, employees, community, and future board members. Each levy must contribute to short-term and long-term financial goals. There is new legislation this year that we are referring to as the Look Back Recapture Levy, which will provide a little bit of a safety net, as we recommend levying below the PTEL limit. This will be discussed on a further slide, future slide. We share this list of projects with you, as it compiles the priorities that were identified in the strategic plan. We plan to fund all of these projects over the next several years through our annual operating budgets and reserves. The levy amount that we recommend will allow us to continue funding our instructional programs while also maintaining our facilities, all through an increase to the levy each year of the cost of living increase or less. Any change to this financial plan can inhibit our ability to fulfill this commitment. As I mentioned earlier, there is new legislation, beginning with this levy year, that addresses the levy for taxing bodies that levy more than last year but less than the PTEL limit. This applies to our recommendation this year. We're recommending a 3.8% levy increase that is less than PTEL, but it is more than last year. So here's how this legislation will work. After passing a levy, we need to notify Cook County that we passed a levy less than PTEL within 60 days. So if you pass a levy in mid-December, by mid-February, we need to notify Cook County of this. That is easy enough. We will recommend that we do that regardless of any future action the board should decide. Then the legislation allows that for the next three years, you can levy more than the PTEL amount, if you want to, in order to recapture that levy basis that you lost by not levying up to the PTEL limit this year. However, you can never go above 5% regardless in any year. So what does that mean for us? So if we approve a 3.8% levy this year, below the PTEL cap of 5.3%, for the next three years, we will be able to levy more than PTEL. So say, for the next three years, CPI is 2%. We could levy above that amount until we recapture the difference between the 3.8% that we recommend and the 5.3% limit for this year. That sounds great, and it's certainly the flexibility that we've been looking for and other taxing bodies have been asking for. However, in practice, it still has a few flaws. First, it states that in no circumstance can taxing bodies levy above 5% in a single year, and it's looking like CPI will be over 5% again this year. So that would mean that for next year, we would not be able to recapture any additional funds if we so choose. But we would still have the flexibility in years two and three, assuming CPI was under 5%. And also practically speaking, it would be very difficult to ask the taxpayers to return tax relief that would be provided one year and pay it back the next year.
While the district levies a determined amount each year, we don't receive the full amount of taxes that we're levying. The chart on this slide represents the amount of property tax refunds that are issued against the district's property tax collections each year. Property tax appeal board decisions, refunds generated by the Courts for Tax Objection Complaints, certificates of error, and other categories of refunds lead to the lost revenue. Because the refunds are issued after tax bills are generated, the total levy amount is not redistributed among taxpayers, but rather removed from current property tax collections that are paid to the taxing bodies. Over the past eight years, the district has averaged refunds in the amount of $6.6 million. After a lower period of refunds during the height of the pandemic, refunds did return close to historical averages last year, once the courts were back in session. If you take a look at current-year refunds, they are unusually low. However, the county has not generated final tax rates or tax bills for the '21 tax year. It's possible that some of the refunds that are being generated right now are being done prior to tax bill calculations, which would in turn not be processed as a refund to the district. Additionally, there was a change in the exemption laws, which will hopefully decrease the rate of certificates of error that are processed as refunds toward the district. Finally, because the taxes are stalled right now at the county level, it is anticipated that we will see a large influx in refunds once those are generated later in the fiscal A new law passed last year, which directs the county to automatically levy funds that recapture taxes that are lost due to these certain categories of property tax refunds. The levy is set to recapture funds that were previously levied but lost to the taxing body by way of refund. The amount of the supplemental levy that is calculated is equal to the refunds that result from three categories of refunds, including tax objection complaints, PTAB decisions, or certificates of error. The refunds that are calculated over a 12-month period of November to November. The amount of the recapture levy is certified by November 15th each year. The Cook County Clerk will automatically add the final refund amount to the '22 levy as a supplemental levy. No local board action is required, because these refunds are a component of the levy that was previously approved by the board. Last year, however, the district supplemental levy amount of approximately $3 million was fully abated by the board, so we did not take those refunds as tax revenue. The current year's amount will be shared with the board at the December meeting, as we will not have it in time to release, at least we don't believe we'll have it in time to share that at the November meeting. The tax refund recapture levy is not subject to PTEL, which means that it's not part of the final levy extension, which is used to calculate next year's levy amount. It also means that each time that this would be abated, it's a one-year tax relief and not compounded, as we demonstrated with the $3 million abatement, the other $3 million abatement that was made on the operating levy last year. Taxing bodies have the ability to file an abatement of their current tax year levy. For the '22 levy, abatements must be filed by April 3rd of 2023. However, due to the new Look Back Recapture Levy legislation that Barb described, abatements must be filed within 60 days of filing our levy to qualify for this Look Back Levy provision. Abatements for both the '22 levy and the Property Tax Refund Recapture Levy will be recommended for approval during the December board meeting. Because we don't have a debt service levy to abate, an abatement of the '22 levy will include a reduction to the levy of the operating funds. Barb described that that will take place primarily from the operations and maintenance fund. For that reason, abatements must be reviewed with their financial impact on current and future year projections. In the instance of an abatement, the final levy amount becomes the new baseline used to calculate next year's levy. The district may utilize the Look Back Recapture Levy provision within three years of filing the levy, should financial conditions change from our current projections.
Setting the levy impacts not only the current budget year, but all future years to follow. It is therefore important that we update the five-year projection model in conjunction with the levy proposal. Our modeling has many assumptions, but there are a couple key ones that I wanted to point out here this evening. We're assuming that CPI for this current year will be 5%, and that we will have a 2% CPI in all future years, and that we will levy to this full PTEL amount in these years. However, we do assume that the property tax refund recapture levy that Lauren just discussed will be abated in full regardless of the amount each year. We also assume that once the ESSER funding is complete in 2024, the associated expenditures will stop as well. And although not on this chart, we do assume that the board will continue to waive all instructional fees for all future years. This is the five-year financial forecast for all funds combined. It assumes that the 2022 levy is adopted at the recommended increase of 3.8%. The result is that by the end of 2028, our reserves will be about 39%, still healthy but below current levels. Capital projects will be completed according to plan without issuing debt. We're confident that the proposal will allow the district to continue to provide exceptional, educational, and experiences for our students while remaining in a healthy financial position. The Truth in Taxation statute requires all taxing bodies levying an increase over the prior year of more than 5% hold a public hearing on the levy amount. We are not recommending an increase over 5%, so this doesn't pertain to us. However, in the interest of financial transparency, as well as past practice, we recommend following the Truth in Taxation guidelines regardless. This requires that the levy amount be determined at least 20 days prior to levy adoption, and a notice of public hearing be published in a local newspaper. The levy recommended tonight will support the continuation of outstanding instructional programs for our students, fulfill our strategic direction to fund our capital projects without debt, and position the district for solid financial health for the current year and into the future. We are confident of this proposal, and we are pleased to offer a levy increase that is just over half the amount of inflation during these unusual economic times.
2022 levy information is presented to the board over a series of meetings. Introductory information was first presented in September. Tonight's agenda will provide the board with additional information on the levy, including the recommendation that has been just shared. The board will then set the amount of the tentative levy in November, followed by a public hearing and levy adoption in December. The levy must be approved and filed with the county clerk by no later than the last Tuesday in December. With that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening. Questions?
Yes, on Slide 11, you commented that refunds, some refunds are not redistributed, but instead withheld. You made comments on this slide. Can you go into more detail about that?
Yes, I believe you're, and correct me if I'm not answering your question, but so for the current, where you see '22, '23, we're under $1 million for refunds there, which is very low compared to where we typically are this time of year. This is the refunds that we've collected since we start recording with the with the change in our fiscal year. So this is July 1 through October 14 currently. What, because, so when refunds are generated after tax bills are calculated, the way that the county applies those to the district is it's just a refund against the collections that have already been levied. When the tax bills have not been calculated, there's an ability for the refund to be generated to the property owner, but it's, that amount is then still the total, which is determined and divided among all taxpayers for the final tax amount. So there is belief with our tax attorneys that that is happening. To what degree that's happening right now, I can't speak. But I also believe that a lot of the refunds that are issued, we may start to see an influx in those once tax bills are calculated and people have their final rate information. I do also know that there is a tremendous backlog that is in the court, in the PTAB system, which continues to be delayed. And once those are processed, those would be passed through to us as well.
Okay, my follow-up question is generally speaking, just very, very broadly speaking, you know, we're talking about the county being late, about meeting various parts of their deadline, distributing the funds, et cetera. Is there an average about how late the county is about distributing, you know, distributing funds? I know that, you know, other members of the board have been on a lot longer than me, and so I only have the years, the past, you know, three years for myself to compare it to. I mean, are we building into our financial projections and these kinds of plans that we're expecting, you know, I don't know, six months, up to six months of delay, et cetera? That's what I'm asking about.
I have, have you seen a time where they have been this delayed? I have not seen a time where we have been this delayed. You will see in your financials tonight that our revenue that we've generated, I believe, is 11 million compared to last year's totals. You can see the stark difference in what we've typically received. Certainly, our reserves are critical right now. There are many districts that are issuing tax anticipation warrants and other types of short-term debt to be able to cover their operating expenses. We have been in a position where we've not had to do that, and that is why our reserves are so critical. I don't know if you have anything you'd add to that, but...
No, certainly in our tenure here, we haven't seen a delay of this magnitude, and the county is suggesting that this is really a one-time delay. But what's the next, you know, critical thing that's going to come up that's going to delay the tax bills? What's next on the corner?
I appreciate that. Any other questions, Mr. Dombrowski?
I have one.
Mr. Dombrowski, can I pause you for a second? I want to go back to Slide 11.
That's fine.
I'm a little confused on the two types of refunds that property taxpayers pay. One of them is, you described two different scenarios. One where real money is really refunded, and the other one, it's spread out over the next tax year.
So there are several categories of refunds. For the district, the three primary types of refunds are property tax appeal board decisions, or PTABs, our circuit court cases, which is another way for a property owner to file an appeal of their assessed valuation, but they do so in circuit court instead of with the Board of Review. And then we also have certificates of error, which are, the vast majority of the certificates of error are either exemptions that are calculated late, like a homeowner exemption or a senior exemption, or they could be just adjustments that are made if someone appeals their taxes and they don't meet the threshold to where they're going potentially in front of the PTAB board. It would be an adjustment that comes through after the fact once that decision has been made, a general property valuation reduction.
Okay, there's a lot, lot going on here. Under what circumstances does District 211 have to refund taxes that have already been collected?
Those three that I just described. There are some other ones as well, but those are certainly the majority of them. So because all of those take place after tax bills are calculated, the only way for that refund to be generated to the property owner is for them to remove that from the taxing body collections. So when we get our tax revenue statement, when those taxes come in, we will see collections and we see refunds. So they're generated against those, they're net of the collections.
Doesn't the property tax refund recapture levy mitigate all of that?
So the recapture levy is a portion of the refund. So for last year, I'll use that as an example, and it's, the recapture levy is not the same fiscal year that's represented here. So we had, last year, our recapture levy was $3 million from November to November. You can see here, we had 5.9 and then a $7 million refund amount. So it was a portion of those. The recapture, what's happening with the recapture levy is if a property owner is generated a refund of $100,000, that $100,000 is now spread among all other property taxpayers, and that's why we've continued to intervene in the cases so that we are preserving any potential level of shift onto other taxpayers of that amount.
Did we, going back to the first example, which we just had for the recapture levy, did we pay more in refunds than the refund, than the refund recapture levy provided back to us?
Yes.
So what was, it was around 3 million from the recapture. What, how much were the refunds that we had to pay?
So again, if you look at the two, the bars here for fiscal year '21 and '22, between the two years, it's about $13 million. I would have to look to see the timing of when those came in because the timing of the $3 million calculation spreads those two years. So it's hard to say off the top of my head what the difference was.
I guess the bottom line is we are refunding more money than we are getting back for the recapture levy. Is that correct?
Yeah, the total refunds were more than twice the recapture levy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski?
Yeah, this kind of goes to the board seeking to reduce the fund balance and kind of along with the five-year projections that were provided. It's a little bit of a kind of explanation of what I'm looking at before I get to my question. In 2019, the administration recommended a 3% levy with projections of CPI of 1.5% annually to get our operating fund balance to decline to 42%. In 2020, 2.73% was recommended with CPI projections over the next five years of 1.9 annually to get the total fund balance down to 41.8%. In 2021, 1.6% levy increase was recommended and approved with a CPI of 2% annually in our five-year projections to get our total fund balance down to 47.4%. We're now at 52.1% fund balance, and we're being asked to approve 3.8%. This is over 75% higher than the CPI projections we were using in our five-year projections to help reduce the fund balance closer to our policy. We can all agree that every dollar removed from the community and squirreled away without purpose not only deprives the community of resources to fight the pressures of inflation, but also squanders the trust our community has that D-211 is asking based on need and not recklessly as an entitlement. My question is, how does the administration propose to reduce the ever-growing fund balance when every levy request is 50 to 75% and sometimes even higher than the provided five-year projection formulas to get the fund balance closer to 40%?
Maybe you want to address the CPI projections?
I just want to add one component into the history that you went through. One of the additions that changed the fund balance was the sale of the land and that money that went into the reserves. That would have changed the trajectory of that multi-year history you went through.
I think each year, when we do our projections, and certainly on the variable slide that we showed, it is a variable when we are projecting CPI. We do not have a crystal ball to determine what CPI is. We have a good sense at this time in the year what next year's CPI will be. However, we have been surprised in December when it completely changes from financial projections that we follow. So that is what we're using, is we're using historical averages to drive future years. And I will say that in the financial projection that we're showing this evening, we are using 5% next year. In the event that that did change next year, even by a percent, if it was 4%, that has a negative impact on our fund balance, just the same as, you know, and that's why we update it every year is, you know, if trends continue to look up, right now, we're in a time where CPI is looking a little bit higher in future years than it was at this time, you know, in prior years where we've maybe used 1.9 of the two. So it is certainly a variable, but we also understand that, you know, one of those 2% could be a 1% is another example, and it all has an impact on where our ending fund balance is. We use the best information that we have that's available at the time.
So I guess, why are we deviating from the 2% projections that we've been using in our five-year projection plan and jumping right to 3.8? I mean, that's the crux of the question.
Well, at the time when we would be using a 2%, if we went back prior years and had 2%, we were projecting a 2% increase in expenses and a 2% increase in revenue. Right now, we know that that is not our reality. So our levy is driven by increases that we have. We've updated costs for staffing and benefits and purchase services, supplies, other things that we are seeing, our construction projects that we are seeing true increases for. And we are still levying half, you know, slightly more than half of the rate of inflation, which is what we're seeing in some of those particular areas. And I don't know if you'd add anything to that, but...
Yeah, I agree. You know, I think at the time those projection models were prepared, we used the best information that we had at the time, and the times have changed. We have a new union contract, so that's 75% of our expenses.
Right, and I appreciate that, but it seems like over the last eight to 10 years, we've been looking at about a $7 million surplus annually. And that compounds into our fund balance, which even if we were just looking at 17 million from the land sale, it wouldn't bring us from a 40% fund balance to a 52% fund balance. So my concern is that we're focused on adjustments based on the current CPI, but not really considering the associated reduction of that funding that it has an impact on the community, and then we just wind up putting it away. It's beneficial this year. I know that the county also has some loans associated with our financial projections because we're expecting our tax bills to come out in December. I anticipate we'll have a high capture rate on our property taxes, but I'm still concerned with the projection being higher than the five-year and historical averages and winding up with another surplus and a continual growth in our fund balance.
Well, I would answer that for the last three years, we have proposed a levy increase that is less than the PTAL limit. And next year, should circumstances warrant it, we could possibly do that again. So we're making the recommendation that we feel is appropriate with the information we have now.
My next question then is, why pass the levy at the cap plus growth and then abate? Why not just pass the levy in one single motion without the abatement?
Our recommendation will be that it would be a single motion. However, there would be two parts, that it's, you set the levy amount, and then it's an abatement, but it would be all in a single motion, not similar to the way that we did last year where you do it in December and come back in a future meeting.
But why not just a motion to levy that amount? Why to have the second part, why go high and then cut? Why not just go right to the number that we want to levy?
Yeah, it's just a cleaner way of presenting the information to the county and our, you know, as we work with our attorneys, the recommendation is to follow, to file the abatement so that we have a record of the reduction from the amount. There's some greater flexibility in it, not that we anticipate needing it, but should there be information that significantly changes, we could potentially have greater flexibility with it up until the date of the abatement deadline in April. So it's just, it really, the end number is the same. It is, the recommendation is a 3.5 plus 3% new property increase, and that's what the action will be in December.
And it's clear that if we pass this 5.3% increase and then abate that, that doesn't impact the look back, right? Because it sounds like we'd be passing over the 5% and negating the look back and then trying to abate it. I just want to make sure, because if we pass just that solid number without the abatement, we don't even get close to that territory. So the impact on the look back seems that it could be misconstrued.
No, I understand your question on that, and the, it is the final amount that's, the final levy extension amount that is less than PTAL. And for that reason, you actually have the ability to file an abatement up to 60 days after and still certify to the county that you intentionally levied less than PTAL to qualify for the look back provision.
That's one of the multiple discussions that we're having with not only the Cook County Assessor's Office, but also our tax attorneys and together, is because this is the first year the look-back recapture levy is available, we are not getting definitive, straightforward answers on the best way to approach it. So we keep asking questions and making sure that we are protecting ourselves the best we can, and at this point, that's what they're telling us we should do.
Any other questions?
The, can we go to Slide 7, please? I've got two related questions here. The math, I'm not following, but that's okay. What it looks like for an abatement, there are two types of an abatement that are going to be rolled in here. One of them is the abatement which you proposed against PTAL. The other one is the refund recapture abatement. What's the total when you add those two?
We don't have that number yet. It hasn't been released to us. It will be coming by November 15 from Cook County.
Well, we know half of it, right?
We don't have it.
No, I mean, the PTAL abatement, you're recommending 3.6.
The PTAL are recommending 3.6.
So if it was, it could be higher or lower than last year. Okay, I know you're crystal balling it, and you don't have the information to...
If I were crystal balling on the tax refund recapture abatement for this year, it will be higher.
Higher than what we got?
Higher than last year's abatement.
Yeah, and then I'm still confused over, I understand what you just said. We don't really know what the look back is really going to look like because nobody's answering questions, so I can understand the caution there. But it seems like you're making it so complicated instead of just levying the bottom line rather than go through in the, you know, here's what we're going to levy, then we're going to abate some of it. I mean, it's really complicated. Why not just levy the difference? You know, between the 3.8 and what you want to abate? Why not just make that the levy?
That will be the levy?
Well, but, okay, there's a levy of 3.5, and then we're going to give some, the plans are to abate $3 million of that.
The plans are to abate from the total levy of 5.3.
Abate from the, to bring it down to 3.8?
Correct.
And that will all be in one motion?
Why not just levy the abated amount?
Tonight, for the purpose of tonight, it was to show the difference too, so that you can see what a full levy is and see what the abatement of the $3.6 million is, to have that full picture of what the financial recommendation is for the levy.
So after the, okay, the abatement will bring the levy from 5.3 down to 3.5. But then, isn't there going to be another abatement?
Yes, but we don't know the amount yet.
The tax refund recapture abatement does have to be a separate motion.
Okay.
They're subject to different conditions. Am I right in understanding that?
They are subject to different... They are subject to different conditions. That levy abatement, the recapture or the refund abatement, we do have until April to file. We are recommending that assuming the county gets us the information as they're prescribing, that we would have that information as part of the action in December.
Make it more clear in my own mind. Why not levy the 3.5, which is you're getting to by doing the levy at 5.3 and then abating?
Can I ask this? If we were to levy at the lower amount, then to come to the same amount, we wouldn't do the abatement, correct?
Correct.
Because we're already levying at the lower amount.
Correct.
Correct. If I can just clarify one thing, whether we do it, it's all going to be in one motion for the levy that we're talking about, and whether we do it as a full amount with abatement in one motion or the actual abatement, it will be based on what our tax attorneys are telling us puts us in the best situation for this new lookback recapture levy.
Because we don't know what that's going to look, what they're going to be like.
How they're implementing that is not given to us in detail, and I will tell you, there are not a lot of districts that are asking this question, because they're not in the position we are of levying below the tax cap. So when we come forward, I guarantee you, it will be after multiple discussions and based on the advice of our tax attorney who sits in the conversations with us for the Cook County's tax assessors. Can you go to slide seven very quickly, please, just to make sure we're on the same page? The second motion is that second line. The tax refund recapture abatement does have to be separate, and then we will get that number, and that's, that is correct. That is a different thing.
And it is independent of PTAL and the operating levy, completely separate.
So the bottom line is 3.5? That's the...
3.8.
Plus new property.
What will happen to the reserves? Will they go up or will they go down? Correlated to that question is, do we have enough money to...
Yes.
Is there more of a cushion than what we really need?
They will go down. This five-year projection shows that the reserves will go from 52% this year down to 39% after five years.
I'll bet you 1% on that.
I'm sorry?
I'll bet you 1% on that.
Well, what is on this, on slide 15, that I want to make sure the board understands, where it's for the first blue column, which has the budget FY 2023, that has our recommendation of the 3.8% with the abatement that we're talking about. But when you go to the second one, FY '24, that has a 5%, that has the full in there, and that will be up to the board in a year from now to decide whether that stays 5% or that goes down. And if that goes down, that shifts the numbers again going down.
If the, if we levy less than 5%?
That's correct.
Or 4%? That would bring the, that would bring the reserves down.
Again, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry.
No, we're rolling the dice, I mean, because we don't know.
Well, the assumption here is that at the end of the year, we come in on budget and that these projections are accurate, but if we have a surplus, 52.6 might be 55%.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Small, but you provided the board prior to this meeting, a couple of different scenarios, one at the 5% for next year and one at a different percent with the projected out fund balances associated to that.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have that. Any other questions? All right, if I may, just to clarify here for my understanding, we're looking at what the levy amount is, we're looking at the abatement, and just an understanding that the abatement decreases that levy and helps, you know, the taxpayers, and we're also looking at the tax refund recapture amount being a abatement, so that would decrease it. We're right in the middle, 3.5 is probably reasonable to maintain what we're looking to do and maintain our schools, and I think we have to keep that in mind as we're moving forward, and our fund balance does decrease. Later on, we're going to be looking at capital improvements over the next 10 years, and I think that's an important consideration to keep in mind as we move forward. So are there any other questions? Or Dr. Small, is there anything else you'd like to add? And as always, if there's questions, I know Ms. Hummel and Ms. Peterson are always very willing to answer our questions. So, all right, I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then that takes us to consent agenda items. I have been asked that we remove item F from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that a board member wishes to remove? Okay, if there is none, then the recommended action would be that the consent agenda be approved as presented with the removal of item F, Resolutions Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, then that takes us to the recommended action, that the Board of Education approve the Resolution Authorizing Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, which seek assessed valuation reductions in excess of $100,000 for property tax year 2021. Docket numbers 21-26487, 21-23844, 21-26095, 21-24458, 21-24489, 21-26101, 21-24486, 21-21499, 21-22022, 21-25588, and 21-24415. And further authorize Franziq as the Board of Education's legal representative to file requests to intervene in appeal proceedings forms with the Property Tax Appeal Board on the properties for which the district receives notification of appeal. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, thank you for removing this from the consent agenda. The district has a recapture levy. We're currently paying a law firm on average $80,000 annually and then some to chase maybe a $900,000 annual average return on that effort. This should not be buried as a routine business item. If this money is so important that we have to hire our lawyers to intervene, then we should be allowing the recapture levy to make us whole. If we're giving up $3 million for $900,000 to state that we need these funds, why are we paying the legal fees for that? The process to accept the recapture levy, it has no associated fee with it. Additionally, the PTAB Property Tax Appeal Board is an elected body that exists to ensure properties are assessed fairly. By authorizing and rationalizing the PTAB board, that they would not have reassessed the same way without the interventions is a bit of a reach and kind of undermines what that elected board does. So first, I don't think this should be a routine agenda item. I mean, one of the properties that we're sticking the lawyers on is the property where first students stores their buses. You know, I don't think we really need to be chasing our small businesses down and trying to harass them. When you look at an assessment reduction of 100,000, I mean, 7% of that would be $7,000. It seems like not really the best use of our resources or the proper focus for this board.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, what if, okay, what if we did nothing, okay, and all of these PTAB appeals were accepted, not denied, that they were granted?
Well, I can provide a few examples that we see commonly. When a property files their objection, they submit evidence with their objection, which typically is in the form of an appraisal.
A what?
An appraisal, a property appraisal. When the district intervenes in those cases, we have to submit our opposing evidence, which is also typically an appraisal of the property, and the difference in those appraisals can be significant. So when the PTAB board is looking at the evidence, they are seeing the difference in the appraisals and coming up with some objective decision on what they believe is the appropriate valuation. And so our intervention with that evidence is just providing more information for a picture for the board to review.
If they're all approved by the PTAB board, don't we get that money back through the recapture levy?
We do.
So why are we fighting it?
Because if the property, that one property owner, their refund is then added to the tax rolls for every single taxpayer within the district boundaries.
That happens, that happens as a homeowner, okay?
But it's happening in addition to the PTAL cap.
Well, if, right, the levy is absolute, okay, it's a zero-sum gain, but I mean, that's the way it is, because the property was improperly assessed originally.
I do not disagree that oftentimes the properties are assessed at inaccurate levels initially.
I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Dombrowski. We're chasing stuff that we're going to get back, and it's costing us money.
So right now, we are, the averted loss that we are seeing is 43% based upon the settled cases that we have, so that 43% is cost that would be otherwise, if we were to take the recapture levy, that 43% that we have averted through our intervention would be distributed among the remaining taxpayers. And that taxpayer themselves pays a portion of that as well, but other, the other taxpayers are paying it.
That's how the system works, because it's a zero-sum game.
If I may kind of clarify, I guess in my way of thinking, if the company gets a reassessment and they get money back from us that we've collected, somebody else is going to have to pay that amount, so it gets spread out to other taxpayers or other businesses.
Right, but we need that money, and we said as much that we needed it, and we levied that amount based on need and whether it's redistributed at the end. All we're doing is protecting the person that received the refund by not redistributing to him and his neighbors.
I'd like to make some comments. If we do not waive the recapture levy, the amount of money issued as refunds within our taxing district over the last year is then added to the total levy, increasing the burden on all taxpayers. This is what we keep discussing. I looked through the last year of reports, authorizing the district to intervene in petitions to reduce property valuation reductions in excess of $100,000, what we're discussing now, and the vast majority are made by businesses, not individual homeowners. Such businesses included BMO Harris Bank, US Bank, Lifetime Fitness Incorporated, Best Buy, Red Lobster, and Sears. These are all publicly available for anybody who'd like to look. If we do not intervene in appeals and instead levy whatever refunds are issued on the basis of those proceedings, everyday homeowners make up the difference. Asking seniors on a fixed income to chip in and cover the cost of Best Buy's property tax break is indefensible. I recognize how important a thriving business community is for residents. Everyday people struggling to stay in their homes and pay their bills should not shoulder the tax burden or additional tax burden for businesses petitioning for a large devaluation of their commercial property holdings.
Yeah, I'd like those businesses to stay. If we overtax them, they're not going to stay. They're leaving.
Well, that's another discussion, and hopefully they're going to stay, because they are making, you know, money here in the community, and as long as the taxpayers can help support those businesses, I think that's a positive.
And I would agree, no one is disputing that we want properties to be assessed properly and people to pay their fair amount of taxes. That is not in dispute whatsoever. But the reality is that if we did not abate that amount, it's added, so if, you know, last year's refunds were $7 million, if even a portion of that, $5 million were refunds that come back to us via the recapture levy, and we take that in addition to our current levy, we're actually higher than what the PTAL cap would be for that current year. So our recommendation is to continue to provide, we understand that when we're levying, we are losing a portion each year, but we are, our recommendation is provided with the consideration of that abatement so that our financial, and that's included in the financial projections that are provided this evening.
Okay. Any other discussion? I think Mr. Dombrowski had a question about the placement of this on the agenda, so we will follow up in regards to that.
Yeah, I have the board policy regarding consent agenda items. They discuss routine items, and I don't believe this should be a routine item.
Okay, let's get clarification on that. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Can we get clarification that isn't from the attorney that benefits from having this buried in the consent agenda? I mean, I'd hate to ask Franziq to, you know, review something that benefits Franziq.
So that the decision of the board as to where this goes, if it remains in the consent agenda, any board member has the opportunity to pull it separately, as Mr. Dombrowski showed tonight. Otherwise, it would go under probably new business as a standing agenda item every time.
And no offense, but I don't think things on the consent agenda are buried items. Rather, I go through every single one, and like Dr. Small said, if I wanted something pulled out, I could request that as well.
Okay, I just wanted to avoid having to pull it out every month, but if that's the case, that the board agrees that this should stay on the consent agenda, so be it.
All right, any other discussion on this item? All right, if not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, and then that brings us to Special Reports and Communications. We have the Freedom of Information Act request, that's an information item. The next is the Free and Reduced Price Meal Eligibility Report. Again, that's an information item. Dr. Small?
This report indicates an increase in free and reduced lunch and breakfast eligibility over last year. For the past two years, the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program provided free meals to all students. This school year, the National School Meal Program is back to its pre-pandemic practice of providing free and reduced meals only to students based on family eligibility. This change has caused more families to see the benefit of completing the waiver to gain access to this decrease in meal pricing. Therefore, the percent of families eligible for free and reduced meals is now approaching our pre-pandemic levels of approximately 35% of all of our families across the district are qualifying for these free or reduced meal prices.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you. Then that takes us to Public Act 99.456. And Dr. Small, this was requested as a discussion, and that's Senate Bill 100. Dr. Small?
At the September meeting, the board asked for information regarding Public Act 99456, also known as Senate Bill 100. In 2016, this bill focused schools on the required change in punitive punishments, including decreasing students' time out of school for disciplinary action, limiting why students could be suspended or expelled, limiting how long suspensions can occur, not allowing zero tolerance policies in response to students' actions, and encouraging governmental agreements with local police departments. There were three policy areas updated during this 2016 time focusing on suspensions, expulsions, and bullying. This year, the principals have held meetings for all staff and an open parent meeting for any parents to attend regarding safety. Following the completion of the safety audit and the hiring of the, and the sharing of the information with the police departments, a meeting will be held with one to two parents and one to two volunteer teachers from each building at the district level during second semester. A summary of that meeting will be given to the board. The group is to annual review discipline policies, implementation, and other factors related to the safety of the schools, students, and staff. and other factors related to the safety of the schools, students, and staff.
Any questions?
Yeah, does the administration believe that we're currently fully in compliance with the law?
Yes.
But isn't a parent-teacher council representatives, isn't, isn't, we're not doing that right now, are we?
We're doing it.
We will bring together parent-teacher representatives for a meeting after the security audits are done this year. Isn't that part of the, isn't that part of the law that we have to do that?
Yes.
Okay, we haven't done it yet.
Not this year, no.
Did we do it last year?
No, not at the district level, we did it at a school level.
So we were not in compliance last year?
We did not have a district level meeting, that's correct.
So we were not in compliance with the law?
With that portion, that's correct.
Okay, so we're not in compliance with the law. We were not. Okay, you have my point.
That's been said and answered. Okay, any, what other discussion?
So, Madam President, I think it's important that, that we, as a board, kind of understand a little bit of what's going on with the discipline. Because again, we've, we've had media articles regarding the way we deal with some of our discipline cases. So, you know, some of the law requires that we have policy that's developed by this advisory committee with bus personnel. And I just want to make sure that this is laid out and that discipline, in addition to safety, which is important, also has input. I mean, even recently as last month, I'm learning more about the discipline process that goes on and where certain procedures are required by law and other procedures aren't. And I think it's important that we have our community involved with developing some of the discipline as the intention of the law is, is clearly stating. And I caution this board to not ensure that this is a transparent process and that we don't wind up with one or two parents invited to participate where it's parents that may have children that never experience a discipline action. And that, that's my thoughts on this.
I'm a little confused. Can you clarify a little bit what, what you're looking for?
I think that if we do have a parent-teacher discipline committee, that it shouldn't be a caveat that parents are invited. I, I know that some of our committees, we, we seek out parents and invite parents that are active and maybe their students are not involved in discipline proceedings and they may not have the experience to, to temper some of our policies. And again, 2016, development of this policy for discipline should have input at the development level, not in here's the information of how we discipline at this time.
Dr. Small, can, can you respond to Mr. Dombrowski's question or?
I'm unsure what you're asking. At the, at the school level, it's an open meeting, but for any parent, it's invited to all and all staff. And are you, are you?
That the safety meeting that you're mentioning and referring to? Or is this a discipline development committee?
So in our parent and our teacher meetings that we have, the principals run parent meetings, a series of them throughout the school year. They invite any parent to come who wants to come.
And the parents are part of a development process for discipline? Is that what you're saying?
The parents are not a part at the school level for a development process of discipline.
Okay, thank you.
That would happen at the district level and include the board for the policies.
I, I'm just reading what the law requires.
Right, it's discipline policies, implementation, and other factors related to the safety of the school pupils and the staff.
Again, the language is clear. The parent-teacher advisory committee, in cooperation with, let's say, school bus personnel here, shall develop with the school board policy guideline procedures to establish and maintain school bus safety procedures. These procedures shall be incorporated into the district's pupil discipline policy.
That's correct. And that was in 2016? I can't speak to what happened in 2016, but that was what started everything was 2016.
Understood.
And, and just to clarify, the parent-teacher is an advisory committee? Because then the board establishes the, the policies and reviews the policies.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And we're, we're waiting for the school safety report and then the committee or the, the groups would be convened and given information and then the input, and then it would come back to, to the board here?
Yes.
Superintendent Small, I know that, that security consultants are in high demand now. When do you suppose that, that this audit will be done?
We have had a partial audit, he is, that has not been fully completed at each one of our schools.
So it's going on right now?
That's correct.
I, I didn't know that.
Dr. Small has shared that with us.
Okay, I missed it.
Numerous times.
And Dr. Small, as we move forward, I would like to know more information and I would think my colleagues would as well on the board, how, how we're moving forward with identifying and involving those members of the community, the, the parents, and, and maybe so much as to who, if we're allowed, who is identified to be part of this process and part of the development and the feedback that we're receiving from, from the parents in the community? Okay, thank you.
I guess, yeah, I'm going to express a concern because I think, you know, we're talking about these parent groups and the teacher groups and everything, but we're missing something really vital here, the, you know, the students. What's going on with the student, how we're addressing it? And if the student does have to be sent to an, an alternative school. I think that's really the most important thing is addressing the concerns of our students, whether it's the, the mental health, the behavior issues, how do we work with the students? And how do we provide some wraparound services to the families? Because if our young person is acting out and having problems, there's other issues going on. So I think that that's really important in taking a look at the kid.
There's some of that broad work being done in the Student Wellness Committee. The meetings I've been able to attend, you know, my role is to observe and student representative, you know, there's, the way that the Wellness Committee works, they have school teams that meet with building-level administrators. And then those groups decide who of those members they wish to send to the next upcoming meeting. So it's not always the same student representatives each time. It's a rotating selection of people who are intimately involved in that work at their building level, at, at their homeschool. And, you know, of the meetings that I've been able to attend, the majority of the students there, the concerns that they are sharing, the subjects that they're talking most about is exactly this. Student level, like building atmosphere as it relates to student, how people feel in the building. So mental health, how safe people feel in the building. A lot of mention was made of peer mentoring programs so that peers can encourage one another to behave properly within the buildings and display the kind of expected behavior that we all put forth as expectation. So I, I know that those Wellness Committee meetings are mentioned here because that, that is an avenue, not to say that that has to be the only avenue, but that's certainly an avenue, avenue that students are using to raise concerns related to exactly these issues that we're discussing.
Ms. Cavill?
Thank you.
A question on the process. I think it's been stated that, that parents are not part of that process. Is, are the contents of what the Student Wellness Committee bring up, are those somehow communicated to the parents on, on a, on a broad level?
There's a Wellness Committee update later in the, on the agenda, so we're gonna, I think your question's better addressed later.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, then we will move on to the unfinished business, which is our tax levy information. Again, it's an information item. Is there anything that has not been covered already or that anyone would like to add? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to, to new business. And the first item is an action item. The, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves participation in foreign exchange trips as proposed for the summer of 2023. District 211 reserves the right to cancel any airline travel that the district deems unsafe or to not be in the best interest of District 211. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to make a statement that my daughter participated in one of these programs. She went to Costa Rica and it was a life-changing experience for her. And as a result, she decided to minor in Spanish in college and is currently serving out her student teaching experience in South America. And Costa Rica was a country she was considering to return to. But I'm a strong supporter and proponent of these programs.
The board may not realize it has been three years since we've been able to offer this, so we're pleased to get this back on the table. And also in the write-up, it does detail the recommendation that parents obtain travel insurance because as you see in the motion, we do reserve the right to cancel it if it is unsafe to where they're going.
And just to be clear, I know that each school does the insurance different. What is the process? Because some, some required it as part of, of their trip, that they, they procure it with the, with the travel agency providing the, the trips. And others, it was at the, each individual parent's option.
So some of the agencies we work with allow it to be required while others do not. And so that creates the difference for us.
Do we have a, again, we're assuming no liability, but we're requiring it.
We're requiring what?
No, we recommend that the parents obtain the travel insurance.
I, I understand, but according to what Mr. Schumacher said, some agencies require it.
No, 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 no. Ask your question again that you asked me.
My question was with the, because some schools do it differently and, and based on experiences with a lot of band trips and things like that, are any of the providers of these trips requiring, and, and the district says that in order to use them, you have to purchase the required insurance? Is that correct?
No.
Okay, so the travel insurance can be acquired outside of any of these agencies?
So you're, what I took from your original question was, each school does the insurance portion differently. So it's not technically, we're, when you say each school, I want to clarify that we're responding to what the travel agency and the trip will allow and has in their policy. So some travel agencies, you can put the trip insurance within the cost of the trip, right? And so that's, would be done a certain way for, let's say, Conant High School. I'm a parent of a student from Conant High School and I want to do the insurance and I pay for it as part of the entire trip because that organization allows us to do that. However, at Hoffman Estates High School, if they use a different agency, that agency should, could say to us, we don't allow the insurance to be part of the cost you pay to us. You have to get that insurance from a third-party organization and pay it separately. That's why there's a difference.
Okay, just to be clear, because I know some band trips, it was required as part of the fee. They didn't have the option to opt out or acquire insurance outside. So if we're, if we're supporting an agency that requires an insurance and then we say we're not going to be responsible, even though we're telling you in order to use this service through D211, you have to procure this insurance and you secure losses and the insurance isn't covering it, I, I just find that kind of basically saying if your child wants to go on this trip, they have to pay for an insurance that may not make them whole. And we're not liable for that.
We're not liable for what? Making them whole?
Covering the difference?
No, I mean, if you, if you say that the only way this child can go on this trip through D211 is to purchase the insurance and something happens like during the pandemic where the insurance is saying, we're not going to cover it because you had to cancel within a certain time. So the district in some cases have canceled, like we reserve the right to, to cancel flights, right? That was part of the front statement. So if the insurance policy that I as a parent take says I have to cancel within a certain time, but then the district cancels within the window beyond where we can get reimbursed, you're, you're saying you're not responsible for that. Yet we as parents couldn't use the insurance because we didn't get the cancellation option on our end in time. It was outside of our control.
So I think I understand what you're saying.
Well, that's the problem that happened last time. We, we were canceling pandemic trips after the window and that was made at the district level. And then the parents were not being made whole by the insurance because we didn't meet like the 21-day window.
So I think you're referencing a very specific situation in.
I'm referencing a historical situation.
Of one person, right?
Of everybody.
There might have been a couple of households.
It might have been.
I would agree that it was historical because it was the first time it happened and it was right at the beginning of a global pandemic and there was a lot that was unknown, so.
Once bitten, twice shy. I'm just saying, if the decision is being made by the district to cancel a trip outside of the parent's ability, I, I don't understand how we can, you know, force those parents to forfeit it if we're in control of cancellation and the insurance doesn't allow those windows. That, that's, that's my concern.
Okay.
Let's hope we don't end up in a situation like that going forward. I mean, that was, that was highly unusual, you know, with the pandemic and that. All right, any other discussion in regards to this? All right, if not, then roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. That takes us to bids for consideration buses. The recommended action is that the Board of Education award the bus, the business for buses for the Transportation Department to the lowest responsible bidder. Central state bus sales in the amount of $1,380,460. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So we only received one bid on this and these buses are about $130,000 each. And historically, we've been paying somewhere around $90,000 for these buses. Have we been able to look beyond the three vendors for propane buses?
We send the bid out. It is published and it is available to anyone who chooses to bid on it. The type of propane bus that is best, most tested, I guess I will say, and has, meets the specifications that we have is made by one manufacturer. So we are limited in the number of manufacturer dealers that are bidding on this. We do send it to others and they choose not to bid. So we have the two that, that responded here. We continue to try and solicit feedback from, or proposals from other companies and just have not been successful in doing that. The bid, last year's bid total per bus was about $120,000 a bus.
Follow-on question. What, what are some of the specifications that we have that only one company does that, that other school districts or facilities, you know?
It is the, one of the main criteria and I, I can't speak to some of the technical engine components off the top of my head, but I, I do know that one of the specific components that we require is the extended tank for the propane buses, which gets us, I want to say it's about 50% more
Distance.
Distance in the, or capacity in the, the fuel tank itself, which is very important for us when we are traveling further distances and there are fewer propane fueling locations, depending on where you're, where you're headed. So that's one of the, the main things that we are looking at that is only available on the Bluebird bus. I know that there are specific things relating to the engine as well, but I apologize, I just can't speak to those right now.
Probably premature, but have, have we started looking into electric?
Yes, we look, I talk to our Transportation Director about electric all of the time. She just got back from a conference and gave me a slew of reasons why she still would not recommend that we get into the electric world. Those buses right now are in the ballpark of $400,000. There's a huge draw on the electrical grid. There's a huge draw on the electrical grid. The battery components, especially in our climate, are not ideal, among several other factors that she would cite as well.
We're years away from it.
We are years away. And we do continue to look. And we also look at other alternative fuel sources. There's CNG, there's some other options that are out there, but right now propane is our recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
That takes us to BitSight Security Rating Service, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the use of BitSight Security Rating Service at an annual cost of $30,000 for a one-year subscription period. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Dr. Small?
The BitSight Security Rating Service enables our IT departments to gain a deeper understanding of its own security performance in the way of cyber liability carriers who evaluate our security risks. Security ratings are outside evaluations of data breach risk and represent another layer to our district's approach to cybersecurity.
Any questions or comments? Okay, if there are none, then roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
That takes us to our 10-year Facilities and Capital Improvement Plan update. It's a discussion item. Dr. Small, anything you'd like to highlight here?
This report summarized the capital improvement work completed to date and the progress relative to safety, life safety projects, capital projects, and routine maintenance projects. The report also includes the capital improvement project timeline scheduled over the next several years, as the district is coming into year seven of a 10-year capital improvement plan. The district's strategic plan includes the development of a master facilities plan and continuing the capital improvement schedule in conjunction with the financial planning considerations to ensure the district operates debt-free.
Any questions or thoughts?
I'm just really impressed what I've been seeing so far with some of the schools, and just making it a more comfortable experience for the students.
Thank you. All right, then that'll take us to our proposed policy revisions, and there's four that we have coming before us. I don't know, Dr. Small or Mr. Schumacher, if you wanted to provide some type of an overview?
These are presented as a first review for the board. The voting will not occur until then, our next meeting, and they are based on a recent federal grant policy audit.
The first one is DJC Bidding Requirements. If anyone has any questions? The next is DID Inventories. Then we have EHA Identity Protection, and then JO Student Records. Okay, if there's no questions, then, oh, I'm sorry.
Just, I was reading through it, I was looking again to see which policy it was. Somewhere in here, I think we changed student to child.
Which, which policy are you talking about?
That's what I was looking for, I had read earlier. It's revision to JO. Qualifying individuals may review and challenge material in their child's records upon request. But then we switch back to referencing that as student somewhere. So I think if, if we change what the identifier is in there, if that's to be child, then I think it should just be used consistently throughout. And that was the only thing that I had noticed.
Part of it could be the reflection of the Illinois School Students' Records Act in terms of the verbiage that we use.
Right. And so that, if we're going to change student to child, then we should just make sure that we're consistent with the use of the term throughout the policy.
It would be consistent with the requirement of legislation.
Which, which line are you on?
Well, I was looking at line 13.
Okay.
When we're talking about requests.
And then you could look at line 35 as an example of when it reverts back to student.
Okay.
Right.
And Dr. Small, what you're saying is this is what the state requirement is, that the word child be in there?
There's multiple different legislations that are compiled into this policy. And so we've used the term that was in the legislation of that section. So certainly some are child, some are student, depending on where it comes from.
Right.
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it becomes inconsistent if you try to read through and identify what's defined as what.
Is that something we can change to be consistent, or we need to leave it as such?
I'll take a deeper look into it, just to ensure if there is. I'm happy to communicate with the board and let them know. And if there's a specific reason other than the one I gave tonight, then I'm happy to let you know as well prior to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, if not, then that'll take us to the Illinois Association of School Board Resolution. And again, it's a discussion item. I know Mr. Rosenbloom would just like to make a brief comment.
I do. I'm going to make a little bit of a change from last month. Earlier, eight new resolutions were shared with you, along with information that at this board meeting, rather than review each and every one, I would welcome discussion on any new resolutions that a board member would like to have summarized or to discuss this evening. Are there any of the new resolutions, or amended resolutions, or position statements that have already been shared with you that you would like to discuss at this meeting? At the Board of Education meeting in November, I will again open it up for any discussions on each resolution, and at that meeting, ask you for your vote, your consensus, on how you would like the delegate, the delegate assembly delegate representing this Board of, this Board of Education, all of us, at the Illinois Association of School Boards Triple I Conference and the Delegate Assembly coming up shortly after that meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to potential topics for future discussion.
Okay. Then I, oh, I'm sorry. I have a question in there.
Yes, ma'am.
I am unclear in terms of the consent agenda. Does the board want to discuss this next meeting for consensus as to where the PTABs go?
Where the what goes?
In the consent agenda.
The intervention, the intervention resolution. I have no issue with having that as an item for future discussion.
Is the question...
I need to know where to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I think it's not a discussion that's in the future. I think the question is where are we putting it, right? Am I understanding that right?
Oh, so the question is whether we include it.
You want it to remain in the consent agenda? I think the consent...
And just to help clarify, the definition of consent agenda items in our policy states, all items under this heading are considered routine. Typically, such items as minutes, bids for consideration, personnel recommendations, and monthly financial reports are included on the consent agenda and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent requests that an item or items be removed. The item, items removed, may then be discussed and voted upon separately, so...
All right, so it can be discussed separately. So let me see if there's consensus so we can give Dr. Small direction as we work on the, on the agenda. Would you like it to remain as a consent agenda item? Mr. Bradley, what are your thoughts? Do you want it to remain there because we can always pull it out as Mr. Dombrowski had done this evening and previously?
I would say sure, yes.
To what?
Mr. Kramer? What's, what's your thought? Do you want it to remain in the consent agenda, or do you wish to move it somewhere else?
I'm indifferent. It's, what happens is the same whether it's one place or another, quite frankly.
Correct.
We're just going to have to go through the process every day, I mean, every month, to pull it out.
And that's okay, because that's, that's the prerogative of the board, of the board member. So which way are you going?
I'm indifferent.
My thought is if the consent agenda is for routine items, and we're going to have this item every month, that it stays in the consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. Dombrowski?
I don't believe it's routine because it's dependent on the appeals that are filed with the county, and there was two or three months where we didn't have this on the consent agenda. So from my perspective, it's not routine, and I'd rather have it off the consent agenda.
Okay, Ms. Cavill?
I do not care where this is.
All right. I prefer leaving it right where it is on the consent agenda. And that's, that's three individuals that support it being there. So we're going to leave it at the consent agenda.
Well, what's a majority? Isn't that four?
Fine, I'll want it on the consent agenda. There, the issue's closed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to committee reports, and NSSEO is, is the first one here. We had a presentation on our Continuous Improvement Plan update, more of the collaboration with the Parent Education Resource Center, the PERC Center, providing professional learning newsletter and a listing of events to, to the staff and to the parents. Also talking about equitable, excuse me, equitable opportunities and trainings that's provided to the member districts in, from NSSEO, and working on collaborative partnerships with the parents and the community events. One of the other items that came before the NSSEO board is, we had a presentation from the search firms. Dr. Hackett is retiring. We had two very fine presentations. The firm that we chose to go with is Hazard, Young &amp; Attia. They've begun with a general posting of the position, and then there will be forum groups that will be selected. It will be the superintendents from our eight-member districts. The representatives from the special ed and the business managers will also have some input. Parents will have input in regards to it, along with the, the teachers and the union. So there will be a number of forums and surveys that will go out to, to that community to get input as we look for a new leader for NSSEO. Dr. Hackett has been there for 16 years, and she's really had it grow and made a lot of progress for our students and provided them with a number of opportunities for special needs. So, all right, then that takes us to EdRed and Mr. Rosenbloom.
Thank you. Before we get to update on the kickoff lunch that they had, I wanted to make sure that everyone on the board knew that as a member district, we all have access to the legislative report, which is really quite detailed as to what's going on in Springfield and how it impacts our district. And I strongly encourage you, it's a long read, because there's a lot going on there right now, but if you really want to know anything specific, I encourage you to go on the website and scroll through when you have a chance. So at this time, I'd like to pass it over to Mrs. Hummel regarding her attendance at the annual kickoff lunch.
Thank you. The luncheon was held on October 6th. We had a presentation from EdRed themselves, and then there was a panel discussion that followed. During the EdRed portion of the presentation, they talked about the annual issues that they are going to focus their attention on. They included property taxes with focus on TIF reform, circuit court transparency, and intervention on exempt status. The second is professional development, training, and mandate relief. Third is clear and present danger reform, and the fourth was remediation of data sharing agreement with community colleges. And then the second part of the meeting focused on a school safety panel discussion. The panel was made up of school administrators, a board member, and a state representative. They discussed a variety of topics on school safety, just with their individual feedback and experiences, and some of the things that they thought would be helpful for school districts moving forward. Topics including funding and resource allocation for safety, procedures and communication protocols against, across all schools, and then development of standards for school building, safety, and security. The next member meeting is on November 4th.
Thank you. That'll take us to Administrative Board Policy Group Report. Mr. Kramer, is there anything you would like to add?
We did that, we just went over. And Mr. Schumacher spent hours, literally, weeks trying to crunch all the, all the legislation down into, into cogent thing. Those meetings right now are taking 10 minutes maybe because of the work that he does. Very clear, so thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you. That takes us to Booster Club Report. Mr. Kramer?
Once again, I attended, I got to tell you, the Booster Club people are phenomenal. They do a lot for the, for the students. Impressive, like I said, I have absolutely no responsibilities there whatsoever because they're self-starting, they, they get it, they've got all kinds of help if they need it. There's a lot of technicalities and things that they have, insurance and that sort of stuff. One of the interesting things that was discussed was prom and post-prom activities, the boat. I guess there's, there's an entertainment venue in Hoffman Estates, and they're trying to come up with, with the best solution. The boat has been problematic because of, on Lake Michigan, because of the weather, because of COVID, and a limited capacity. So I mean, they'll, they'll figure it out.
All right, thank you. All right, then that takes us Community and Family Services Report. Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes, the last meeting for the POC South discussed more of what we're doing in the community for Venezuelans that have been bussed into the area. They have new rules, they do credible threat interviews on site by an immigration agent. They have one year to prove their credible asylum. They do report to ICE monthly. Recently, they were working on 45 to 50 families arriving per month. That's in, I believe, Hanover Park alone. Staff meet the buses at the hotel when they arrive, they provide welcome bags with information about where to eat locally and do those types of things. And the group was soliciting bicycle donations for any, so if you have an old bicycle in your garage, they're more than happy to take them and pass them along. And then if you know of any work, a lot of the migrants are looking for work. So even though they may not be legally able to work, they, they can do some services, maybe, you know, help someone for, for some cash in exchange. So they want to, they want to stay productive and useful. And that sums up that meeting. There'll be another meeting on Monday this coming week.
Great, thank you.
I know at a previous board meeting, we had heard about immigrants coming in as students to our school district. Would it be possible, I've actually received a survey from either ISP or EdRed, some, some, an organization that we're affiliated with, asking me for some information regarding immigrants coming to our school district specifically? Is that something that I might be able to?
You can send that to me, and I believe I already have it, though.
I will. You probably do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just add, this is a, the, a conversation amongst superintendents in this area, because certainly if there's a large influx of immigrants coming into a hotel, we go to do the school end of it. And we have the work of our Regional Office of Education, and then there are certainly local agencies, as well as state educational agencies, that come in to assist us to make that happen.
Are we seeing an impact now on 211?
No, not from large communities like that. We do have a steady flow of immigrants that come in, but not in that scenario that was described. Not yet.
Thank you. All right, then that will take us to the Equity Report. I was not able to attend the meeting. I don't, Mr. Bradley?
No, nothing for me.
I'm happy to give that report.
Please, if you would.
Sure. So the Equity Team has had two meetings. It's now being led by our new Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, LaShonda Sandifer, so that's exciting. At their first meeting, they reviewed last year's work, and this is one of those meetings where we work to empower student leadership, and so our students present the work that they accomplished last year at each school. And then they identified their focus and their areas of priority for this year, based on the District 21 Equity Plan. The second meeting, Aaron Holmes, our Director of Communications, did some work and got some feedback from the team on communications in our district. I think that was very helpful. And then they selected their subcommittees and also reviewed the progress of District Goal Number One.
Okay, thank you. And will we get some update on it? I know I was not able... I know I was not able to attend either of those meetings because I had another commitment, and I think Mr. Bradley the same, but we will get the, the minutes or the information in regards to that then?
Sure, I'll make sure she sends them.
Please, thank you. All right, that takes us to the Illinois Association of School Board Reports. Mr. Rosenbloom?
All right, so first of all, there are two new field service directors for ISB. One of them is ours. So we have a new field service director, her name is Dr. Arlena Bedard. She, before joining ISB, she served students and families in schools and districts for over 30 years. She has an extensive background, including being a teacher, curriculum specialist, school and district administrator, and consultant. We will have Anna, Lisa, and I will have the opportunity to meet Dr. Bedard at the ISB Division Meeting next week. So my second update is next week is the North Cook Division Dinner Meeting at Evanston Township High School on Wednesday evening. So again, Mrs. Klimkowitz, Dr. Small, and I will be attending that. Next update is the 2022 Illinois Report Card will be released at 9:00 AM on Thursday, October 27th. The report card is intended to create a snapshot of school performance for the 2021, 2022 school year and provide community residents with data to understand the student learning environment within a district. The Illinois Report Card will include new annual summative designations for all public schools. The last time the federally required designations were issued was in 2019. Since that time, the accountability system has seen changes in response to the impact of the pandemic. Each school will receive one of four designations based on various measures of data and school performance: exemplary, commendable, targeted, and comprehensive. New to the report card this year will be the Equity Journey Continuum. The new, the new tool analyzes district-level data points through the lens of equity to make the data useful for improving outcomes for all students. It's intended to assist districts with tracking their progress towards closing gaps in student achievement, opportunity, and support. So again, that's coming out at 9:00 AM on Thursday, October 27th. Governor Pritzker has appointed a new Chair of the State Board of Education. He is a lifelong educator, having served as a teacher principal and superintendent in Illinois schools. He most recently was superintendent of Niles Township High School District 219, and was previously honored as 2010 Illinois High School Principal of the Year and 1999 Illinois Teacher of the Year. Next update is the ISB Executive Director, Thomas Bertrand, has resigned and will be stepping down on June 30th, 2022, at the end of the association's fiscal year. He's served as Executive Director since July 1st of 2018, and a search process has begun for a successor. ISB has been hosting online webinars on how to navigate running for school board. The most recent one was this afternoon at noon. It was on the Statement of Economic Interests, which we all, as board members, know what that is, and, and it was going through what it is, what to put on there, what not to put on there, how to, how the different terms are identified and defined, and, and when best to include it with your filing paperwork. So that's my next update. And my final update regarding ISB is that I would take, like to take a moment to commend our school board president, Anna Klimkowitz, for attaining the Legacy Board Leader status with ISB. This is very important for board recognition and ISB recognition, and it shows a true attainment, not only for her to continually be recognized as, as a distinguished board leader, but also for 25 or more years of service. So Anna is going to be recognized with some others at the North Cook Division Meeting next week, so I'd like to take a moment to applaud and congratulate Dr. Mrs. Klimkowitz on her achievement. Congratulations. And, and for those who may not know, especially those who are online, Anna was elected to the Board of Education in 1997, and re-elected in 2001, 2005, 2009, 2013, 17, and most recently 2021. She was selected as Board President in 2021, having previously served as Vice President from 2019 to 21, and Secretary from 20, for, for several times. She is currently Resolutions Chair for the North Cook Division of ISB. She serves on the Governing Board of NSSEO as the District Representative since 2011, and was Vice President from 2000 to 2006. She's employed by SEDA Northwest as a family case manager. She has also served in many other ways throughout our community, and has really given back more than, more than one can imagine. So this is truly a great representative of our school district, and well worth the recognition that she's receiving.
Thank you, that's, that's very humbling, and the only thing I could say is, these are amazing people to work with, with my board members, and with, with the staff here and at, at all of our schools, so I, I thank you. You make it very wonderful to, to work with all, all of you, so thank you. All right. That will take us to our Student Wellness Report, and Ms. Cavill?
I was not able to attend as my childcare fell through at the last minute, which I know many people can relate to, so if you could give us an update, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Student, the Student Wellness Team met on October 3rd, and they reviewed the use of and implementation of the definitions of trusted adult-
Schumacher, can you speak closer to the mic, you're hard to hear.
Sure, better?
Yes.
Better, sorry. Student Wellness Team met October 3rd, and the first thing they did at their meeting was establish some new group norms for, for the new members that may have been there. They reviewed the definitions and implementation of the trusted adult and sense of belonging work that they had done last year. They looked at the overall results of the Fall Panorama Survey, and then they reviewed the strategic plan, and there are some components of the strategic plan that directly involve the Student Wellness Team, and so they talked about an overview of their work this year and what they needed to accomplish.
I asked a question earlier, how is that, parents are on the, on the committee, how is that information relayed back to the, to the parents of what their, what their students, not necessarily an individual student, but as an aggregate?
I will look into that. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Do we collect meetings at those minutes of the Wellness Committee? Is there like a summary, or is somebody taking meeting, minutes?
That's a good question, too. I don't know if someone is actively taking minutes during the meeting. I know that typically, when I was in, when I was involved as part of the facilitation, we sent out a summary, but that's one of the things that I'll make sure is still happening.
Okay.
Thank you, any, any other questions there? All right, then the next item is, we have our upcoming calendar of events.
Before we continue on on that, I just wanted to mention that this Saturday is the Conan High School Craft Fair.
Okay.
So that's also an item that will be benefiting the, the Conan PTA.
And, and I know that most of the, the schools will be having some type of craft fairs, or they, they, you know, work on that?
Schonberg was going to have one earlier, but it has been postponed, I understand, until the spring.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then we have our upcoming events, October 26th, National Honor Society, Mr. Dombrowski's going to be there. November 8th is Election Day, our buildings are going to be closed. And our next meeting is November 10th, with the board meeting starting at 6:30. All right. We have on our agenda that we can go into closed session, and since we have it on the agenda, I will read it as a recommended action. If we vote no on it, then that means we would not return to closed session. All right, the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. All right, that takes us to the remaining agenda items. The first is a recommended motion that the Board of Education authorize settlement in the pending workers' compensation matter as presented. May I have a motion, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is that the Board of Education approved the terms of the tentative agreement reached between the Board of Education and the United Support Staff Union Leadership effective July 1, 2022, through June 30th, 2026. May I have a motion, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. And there is no other business to come before the board, then the board president declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned.